Good morning and welcome to a Sorry about that. Good morning and welcome to a New York City Council hearing on immigration joined with small business in the council chambers. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. If you wish to testify, you may do so at the sergeant desk in the back of the room. No one is allowed to approach the dais at any moment. If you need anything, please see one of the sergeants. At this time, Chair, we are ready to begin.
This meeting is called to order. Good morning, everyone. There is interpretation available for anyone needing interpretation. We have interpretation available in Spanish, Wolof, and Haitian Creole, and you can get support outside the chamber or at the sergeant's desk. So, good morning. I am Councilmember Alexa Viles, Chair of the Committee on Immigration. Thank you to today's joint, thank you for coming to today's joint hearing with the Committee on Small Business. We will be examining the important issue of preparing asylum seekers and migrants for the workforce. Thank you to Councilmember Felice, Chair of the Committee on Small Business, for co-chairing this timely hearing. I'd also like to thank the representatives from the administration, members of the public, and my committee colleagues who are, who have joined us here today. We are joined by Councilmember Brewer, Councilmember Shuang, Councilmember Ang, and the public advocate. The significance in the workforce, the significance of immigrants in the workforce cannot be understated. According to the American Immigration Council in the New York State, immigrants make up over twenty-seven percent of the workforce despite only making up less than twenty-three percent of the population. In New York City, roughly 1.8 million immigrants make up forty-four percent of the city's total labor force and contribute eighteen-point-six billion dollars to Social Security and five-point-three billion dollars to Medicare. However, accessing the workforce can be complicated for immigrant workers, especially for those who are undocumented. Under the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, or OWASO, the asylum application help center has focused efforts on work permits. According to updates from City Hall, between June 2023 and March 2024, the center has completed over fifteen thousand work authorization applications. But how many people have secured jobs is less clear. The federal government's arbitrary timelines for submitting work authorization applications, which for asylum-seeking applicants is six months after asylum application is submitted, coupled with a growing backlog of work authorization applications, contribute to significant delays in the issuance of work permits. Additionally, the city's introduction of the thirty- and sixty-day shelter limit stays for recently arrived immigrant newcomers severely complicates access to work permits. The Independent Budget Office recently estimated that the economic impact of missed work authorization because of the thirty- and sixty-day shelter limit rules could be up to one billion dollars. The lack of a stable address makes it difficult to receive work permits and jeopardizes employment stability and quality of life for new arrivals. A sounder approach is possible, and we have much infrastructure in place, and indeed, there's already in place under US municipalities such as Denver, which has a program that recognizes housing stability as crucial to integrating new arrivals into the local economy and provides participants with housing for six months. The program also provides career support, language classes, and legal services during that timeframe. These holistic considerations demonstrate the types of investments necessary to prepare asylum seekers and migrants for the workforce. Preparing new arrivals for the workforce can include resources like OSHA certification, English language classes, digital and financial literacy, licensing, and understanding your rights in the workplace. In New York City, these resources have typically been spread across multiple city agencies. This makes it difficult to identify gaps in services, adequately prepare new arrivals for the workforce, and establish concerted effort to improve workforce development in the city. And it complicates collaboration between workforce development providers and city agencies. However, nonprofit providers have been leaders in New York City in providing workforce training for new arrivals for decades. We have expertise in our city. Their programming makes it clear they recognize that workforce development is more than just providing a worker for a workplace. I'm incredibly grateful to their work and dedication in supporting our new arrivals and entire immigrant community. The city must look to and invest in the vast expertise of our nonprofit providers of workforce development. We must leverage tools like deferred action to combat workplace exploitation and adopt other models like this, like the ones in Denver, to build and help us help immigrant workers. We look forward to hearing from agencies today and hope that the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs and the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations can share details about workforce development resources available to immigrants and how the administration can collaborate more effectively with nonprofit agencies across the city, state, as well as our colleagues at the city, state, and federal levels. We must, and can rationalize our system when we need, use our vast expertise that we currently have, and lastly, invest our dollars in ensuring that the pathways to opportunity are strengthened and made accessible. One thing we know to be true is that when we, when the people in our city succeed, we as a city succeed. We know that our longstanding immigrant community members and new arrivals play a particularly important role in boosting our economy and supporting our labor force. Our great city is great because of this history, which has been demonstrated over and over and over again. When you welcome people and ensure that they have access to the resources that they need to thrive, they contribute amazing things. This is a foundational American value that I am deeply proud of and will continue to affirm and make sure our city stands by. So, the Committee on Immigration will also hear the following legislation. Introduction 216 from Councilmember Hanif, which embraces, which enhances the ID NYC application process, would be key to improving access to ID NYC for new arrivals. And access to government ID is important for new arrivals for a number of reasons, including improving relationships between immigrant communities and city agencies and accessing city services and financial services. We will be hearing Resolution 230 from Councilmember Brewer, which calls for the USCIS to grant humanitarian parole to new arrivals. We will also hear Resolution 235 from Councilmember Brewer, which calls on USCIS to clear the significant backlog of employment authorization applications, and pre-considered resolution from Councilmember Hudson on the, on the state to pass Empire State Licensing Act, which would open professional licensing to all New Yorks, to all New Yorkers, regardless of their immigration status. These bills reflect the changes needed at the local, state, and federal level to begin ensuring that immigrants in New York City have access to and are adequately prepared for the workforce. I'm grateful to the sponsors of these bills and look forward to hearing more from them on how their legislation benefits our immigrant community and our city as a whole. I would also like to thank committee staff for their work on this hearing, including Nicole Kata, Rebecca Barilla, Florentine Cabor, Nia Hyatt, and lastly, my staff, Chief of, Chief of Staff Edward Serna, Christina Botego, Ambarachi Ngadi, and Emmett Tyrann, and everyone who is working so hard to ensure that this meeting runs smoothly today. I will now turn it over to a Small Business Committee Chair, Councilmember Felice, for his opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Viles. Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I'm Councilmember Oswald Felice, the Chair on the Committee on Small Business. Thank you, Chair Viles, for co-organizing today's important hearing, and to all of you for joining us. On the migrant crisis, many things are true. Number one, we are two years into the crisis. By now, we should have good systems, systems that would, that would ensure that applications, for example, work permit applications, TPS asylum applications, are timely submitted without delays. That's number one. Number two, also true, the federal government's failure to give this issue the attention that it needs and deserves has frustrated our ability to help these asylum seekers every way possible. For example, their failure to expedite work permits, frustrating our ability to ensure that they could achieve financial stability as soon as possible. Frustrated our ability to the detriment of not only migrants, but also to the detriment of our city. We know of the labor shortage. We know of our city agencies needing workers. But even in the private industry, last week, I spoke with a large private employer in the food industry who said they have over two thousand jobs, over two thousand jobs that they could easily and quickly fill with migrants, which includes also training as well and language and so much more. But they're not able to do so due to the lack of work permits. The migrants are here. They want to work. The jobs are there, and we're told them to wait six, twelve, or even more months due to the federal rules and regulations related to work permits. Our diverse immigrant communities make New York City a richer, more vibrant place in countless ways, and it is important for the city to both celebrate and support these immense cultural and economic contributions. Immigrant New Yorkers make outsized contributions to, to the economic health of the city. For example, the State Controller estimates that immigrants contributed almost three-hundred-eighty-three billion dollars to the city's economy in 2022, and that they comprise over sixty percent of the formal workforce. They also create thousands of new jobs by starting their own business at more than twice the rate of native-born New Yorkers. In fact, almost half of the city's small businesses are immigrant-owned, a total of over one-hundred-thousand local businesses. We see these critical contributions across economic sectors from construction, transportation, manufacturing, to healthcare, human services, and the city's world-famous hospitality industry. Immigrants accomplish all of this in spite of large bureaucratic hurdles imposed by the federal immigration system. In the last decade, we've seen the size of the New York City's immigrant workforce stagnate, in part because of the restrictive federal immigration laws and policies that have not been meaningfully updated in many decades. Many businesses around the city are struggling to find good employees and are excited to connect with the newly arrived immigrants for seeking work. At the same time, as my co-chair highlighted, many of our newest New Yorkers face an uphill battle to file confusing, complex forms, and then must wait months, sometimes years, to receive the work authorization that many are entitled to by law. While the city can't change federal law, we're committed to helping immigrant New Yorkers to navigate these hurdles as smoothly as possible. The Department of Small Business Services, SBS, has a critical role to play in this effort. In December 2023, SBS introduced a new program, the American Dream Works Program, designed to connect businesses with work-authorized asylum seekers through SBS's Workforce One Career Centers. SBS's eighteen Workforce One Career Centers offer free support to all New Yorkers in finding jobs, including through information about job fairs, financial counseling, interview prep, and resources to pay for necessary job trainings. SBS offers some translation and interpretation services as required by Local Law Thirty of 2017, also known as the Language Access Law. However, we know that in the absence of, of a multilingual core staff, language services can be inefficient or inadequate to address real-time needs. These programs are a good starting place. However, they address only one stage of finding work. This is especially true for New Yorkers who have only recently arrived or who are navigating the asylum process and must go through numerous onerous application processes before they can even start the job search. For example, while many immigrants are highly educated and experienced in their home countries, they may need to secure new certifications, licenses, or even trainings in order to practice their professions in the state of New York. At the same time, much of this information may only be available in English, even for careers that don't require advanced English language skills. For example, required health and safety classes from the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, aka OSHA, can cost upwards of five hundred dollars and are subject to lengthy wait lists and are often unavailable in many of the most common languages such as French, Arabic, just to name two. Nearly half of New Yorkers speak a language other than the English language at home, including over five-hundred, fifty thousand French and Arabic speakers. This gap between services offered and the real needs of New Yorkers is unacceptable. We call on the federal government to do better. At the same time, the city must keep working to make our programs maximally effective, responsive to people's real needs, and accessible to all New Yorkers. Today, we look forward to hearing from the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, and of course, the Department of Small Business Services, on how the city is coordinating support services for asylum seekers and other new migrants who are navigating the complex pathways to US work authorization for the first time. Last but not least, before we begin, I want to thank, of course, my co-chair Alexa Viles. Also want to thank Rebecca Barilla and Jessica Boulay from Central Staff for their work in putting this together. I also want to thank my staffers who have joined us, including Santiago and Nicole. Thank you for joining us. And before we hear from the agencies, I would like to first pass it on to Councilmember Gil Brewer, who has the bill before this hearing today.
Thank you very much. I have two resolutions, and I really thank both chairs for hearing them. 230 calls on the US Citizen and Immigration Services and the Secretary of Homeland Security to grant humanitarian parole of at least two years to asylum seekers who entered the United States prior to the date this parole is announced. And 235, it's a resolution, calls on the US Citizenship and Immigration Services to clear the backlog of I-765 applications for employment authorizations. I don't need to tell anyone in this audience that thousands of migrants in New York City want and need to work, but very few have been approved so far. No work means no money, no work mean, no money means no way to afford an apartment or groceries. No apartment or groceries means full dependence on city human services and nonprofit organizations as great as they are. Full dependence on human services and nonprofits means a heavy strain on the city budget and on the migrants' dignity and mobility. Humanitarian parole provides temporary lawful status in the United States while cases are adjudicated and allows migrants to secure work authorization within five to ten months. There are one-point-four million pending I-765 applications in the United States, and for God's sake, the most important thing we can do is give people the opportunity to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brewer. Also, want to acknowledge Natalia from my team, an intern with our office. Thank you for joining us. Also want to acknowledge some of our colleagues who have joined, including Councilmember Krishnan and Bhacher. And before we hear from the admin, I would like to pass it on to the public advocate of the City of New York, Jomani Williams.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. As mentioned, my name is Jomani Williams, Public Advocate of the City of New York. Thank you, Chair Viles, Chair Felice, and members of the Committees on Immigration and Small Business for holding this hearing and for allowing me to share my statement. We have heard time and time again that all our newest neighbors wish to do is find work, become self-sufficient, and support their families. For many immigrant families, this story is very familiar, the story of arriving in a new country, seeking better opportunities. With over two-hundred thousand migrants and asylum seekers that have come through the city's care since spring of 2002, New York City is in the position to set up our newcomers as well as our existing immigrant communities with the best chances of success in finding dignified work and opportunities. What we are seeing now is the latest example of a long history of immigration into our city, into our country, and a pattern of global migratory patterns based on violence, war, and climate change. We also know that New York City can't do this by itself. Unfortunately, based on the lack of the required resources, funding from the federal government, from the state government, and even a good decompression strategy in the federal system and the state system, we get a different message. But I think we can do more to step up to the plate. One of the first steps begins with identification. Since its launch in 2015, ID NYC has become the largest municipal ID program in the United States, and is open to all New Yorkers regardless of immigration status. The ID enables access to city services and programs, serves as proof of identification at the city level, may be used for healthcare access and banking at certain institutions, among an array of benefits. As a result, many migrants have come to see ID NYC as a necessary document to obtain, especially those lacking government-issued identification. That being said, the city has struggled to keep up with the growing demand for ID NYC applications. Since 2020, many enrollment centers across the city have closed down, leaving just ten sites remaining, with one in the Bronx and Staten Island each. Intro 216, of which I am a co-sponsor, aims to address the difficulties in obtaining a city ID. One of the components of the bill addresses the expansion of in-person application appointments to match demand. At its peak, the city had twenty-nine IEM NYC enrollment sites across, God bless you, enrollment sites across libraries, nonprofits, and hospitals, vital locations where individuals seek services and frequent. We should seek to have that level of access once again. In addition, one of the ongoing hurdles for migrants is work authorization, which is in the hands of the federal government. Although the city is not issuing authority for work permits, it can at least develop and expand workforce development, workforce programs, the train, and program the upcoming, prepare, sorry, the upcoming members of the labor force. I just want to make a note that these jobs are not taken away from long-term New Yorkers, the long-term Americans. They are jobs that are available and have been available that employers simply cannot fill. It's important to say that. Workers centers have for years trained immigrant and communities to obtain their workplace safety certification certifications like OSHA and SST, and many report, report that demand exceeds capacity. The city should be embracing these programs and providing resources, including finding to sustain them, funding to sustain them. The same applies to adult literacy programs across the city, which include those with limited English proficiency. Possessing English proficiency leads to greater outcomes in the type of work opportunities made available or in one's earning potential. The city would be remiss if it did not fortify the continuity of these programs as well. We understand that New York City is a city of immigrants. It's synonymous, and we continue to rely on its immigrant-heavy workforce across a variety of sectors. Also, to be clear, that is undocumented or documented workforce. Our city would simply collapse if we lost any one of, the economy would simply collapse if we lost any one of them, particularly undocumented, which is ripe for abuse because of the need of their labor and inability to provide the protections that are needed. Studies also show that immigrants drive workforce growth and benefit the economy. It would be a major disservice to New Yorkers, both newly arrived and those who have been here, to miss out on the opportunity to develop, train, and prepare the newest members of our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Public Advocate. Now, we'll turn it over to the Committee Council to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair Viles. We will now hear testimony from the administration. We'll hear from Yuri Pauk, Denishel Gross, Lorena Lucero, Tom Torterici, Grace Riddick, and Masha Gindler. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Viles, Chair Felice, and members of the Committees on Immigration and Small Business, and to our public advocate as well. My name is Dinah Shell Gross, and I'm the Executive Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Small Business Services. I am joined by Lorena Lucero from the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, and Masha Gindler and Grace Riddick from the Mayor's Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. I'm also joined by SBS Deputy Commissioner Yuri Pauk. We are pleased to be here today to discuss how asylum seekers access and benefit from our Workforce One Career Center system. SBS's mission is to create economic security for all New Yorkers by connecting them to good jobs, creating stronger businesses, and building thriving neighborhoods. We are proud to have played a critical role in New York City's historic economic recovery from reforming over one hundred city regulations impacting small businesses to facilitating over two-hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars in grants and loans to businesses. Just two weeks ago, we capped off New York City's Small Business Month by announcing that New York City has reached the record-breaking number of one-hundred-eighty-three thousand small businesses, exceeding pre-pandemic levels. As a result of New York City's successful economic resurgence, we've recovered the nearly one million jobs lost during the pandemic and reached a record-breaking four-point-seven million total jobs across the five boroughs. More jobs mean more opportunities for New Yorkers of all backgrounds, including asylum seekers and other new arrivals. SBS teams work hard every day to ensure these jobs are accessible to all job seekers. As part of that effort, SBS provides free hiring help to businesses through our Workforce One Career Center system, a network of eighteen centers located across the five boroughs. We work to understand business recruitment needs across diverse industries and identify New Yorkers with the skills and experience to fill those roles. Workforce One is part of the American Job Center system, a federally funded national network, and operates in close partnership with the New York State Department of Labor, which runs ninety-five career centers statewide, four of which are co-located with SBS Workforce One centers. In fiscal year 2023, Workforce One served over eighty-seven thousand people and referred, referred fifty-four thousand to employers. More than sixteen thousand of the job seekers we served in that year are foreign-born, and close to two-thirds of those served self-identify as Black or Hispanic. Workforce One job seeker services include workshops and one-on-one career coaching, help with resumes and preparing for interviews, identification of jobs that match job seeker experiences and interests, and referral to employers and partners who provide occupational training. Through our business engagement, we connect New Yorkers to job opportunities in high-growth sectors, including work in hospitality, building services, healthcare, construction, and manufacturing. Our physical centers, with many locations near transit hubs, include computer labs and classrooms. In addition to attracting more than two-hundred-and-thirty thousand walk-ins annually, we bring workforce resources deep into neighborhoods across the city through delivering virtual programs and by using Mobi, our mobile outreach unit. We also work with a network of some three hundred community partners who can provide a range of supportive and wraparound services. Together with the efforts of a dozen agencies that comprise the city's workforce system, New York City has a robust workforce development network that creates a critical pipeline of talent and keeps the city's economy resilient and thriving. New York City is a city of immigrants. Our five boroughs are home to the most diverse immigrant population of any major city in the world. SBS has and will continue to serve job seekers with roots from countries around the world. In 2016, we launched a specialized workforce center in Washington Heights, focused on helping immigrants succeed in the local workforce. In addition to our immigrant-focused Workforce One center, we provide tailored services to veterans, people with disabilities, justice-involved individuals, and out-of-school, out-of-work youth aged eighteen to twenty-four. We are proud that across the entire Workforce One system, we are able to directly provide services in nineteen languages. One-third of specialists in Workforce One centers speak a language other than English, and we support an additional two-hundred-plus languages through interpretation services. Over the last year, New York City has seen an influx of new arrivals, many of whom have not been able to legally work due to restrictive federal government policies. While my colleagues at the Mayor's Office are able to share more context on those trends, at SBS, we expect the percentage of at SBS, we expect the percentage of foreign-born Workforce One clients to increase to twenty-five percent in fiscal year twenty-four from twenty percent in the prior fiscal year. In response to the rising number of migrants seeking the right to work, city, state, and federal government agencies are coordinating to ensure access to workforce programming for new arrivals as they become legally eligible to work, in alignment with restrictions that accompany our system's federal funding. For example, OWASO shares a database of asylum seekers applying for work permits through the Asylum Application Help Centers with the New York State Department of Labor. NISDOL phone banks to these individuals and then provides Workforce One with a list of potential job seekers in anticipation of their work authorization. Collaboration between NISDOL and Workforce One is fundamentally important to our system. NISDOL and Workforce One Centers are not only often co-located, but also co-host events. Similarly, OWASO coordinates with shelter agencies to promote city and state employment supports, in addition to other services, and is building a pipeline of cross-agency referrals by shelter-based case managers. In March, the Federal U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Service started to send text alerts to new arrivals receiving work authorization, alerting them of centers like those operated by NISDOL and Workforce One. As a result of these efforts, as well as referrals from immigrant-focused community partners, in the last eight months, SBS has reached out to eight thousand eight hundred and forty-eight new New Yorkers. As this council knows, SBS believes outreach is crucial. This has been a personal focus of our commissioner. It's why you've seen our SBS mobile unit in your districts and why our commissioner has personally visited shelters to meet with new New Yorkers and guide them toward Workforce One services. While there are challenges with serving this population, we can share early signs of promise. Since October, Workforce One has served five thousand five hundred new New Yorkers, including over three thousand seven hundred who self-report having received work authorization. We have referred more than two thousand individual new New Yorkers to employers. On the whole, we have provided thirty-three thousand total workforce services to new New Yorkers. These numbers are a result of all the efforts I've outlined in my testimony, as well as a series of borough-based job fairs, our dedicated American DreamWorks intake forum, email blast to one hundred and twenty thousand business contacts, and engagement with groups like the Educational Alliance, Public Library Systems, and the Hospitality Alliance. We know that other migrants are receiving support through our partners in government like NISDOL and the vast network of nonprofits operating in New York City. Just last month, I personally visited a migrant resource fair organized by Councilmember Hudson, where SBS and NISDOL tabled and offered workforce development services. We reached over two hundred migrants at that event alone. In recent days, some of the new New Yorkers we have supported have reached out to share their success stories. Our downtown Brooklyn Workforce One Center supported a Venezuelan New Yorker who arrived in New York City in June of 2023. When we first made contact, he was living at a city shelter as he awaited work authorization. Following our connection, he was able to enroll in on-the-job training with an airline food service employer. Having now received work authorization, he's making twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents per hour and has moved out of the shelter system. Our Bronx Workforce One Center connected a new New Yorker from Guinea to a job with a parking company after working with him to create a resume and prepare to ace the interview. Our Workforce One Center in Jamaica, Queens, helped a Haitian new New Yorker enroll in a training program called Careers through the Culinary Arts Program. They were able to complete the training, which includes rigorous essential kitchen skills and safety protocols, in March, and has applied to work in New York City public schools. Mayor Adams has been clear. Asylum seekers want to be on a path to independence and want the right to work. Expediting work authorization for asylum seekers would enable the city's workforce development system to support more migrants in securing family-sustaining jobs. We know that our services can help many take a step closer to their American dream, and we hope to work with your committees to help more people understand that Workforce One is a system they can rely on to achieve their career goals. Many of your offices are working on the front lines to engage and support new New Yorkers in your districts. We ask each of you to encourage asylum seekers to contact SBS's Workforce One Network to access services and find employment. If you know employers in any industry that are interested in hiring asylum seekers, please direct them to nyc.gov slash AmericanDreamWorks. Thank you. We look forward to your questions.
Buenos dias. Good morning. Just before you go, thank you. I just want to recognize we've enjoyed my councilmember Palladino. Please.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Aviles, Felice, and Committee on Immigration and on Small Business for holding this hearing on this important topic. Also want to thank public advocate Jumani Williams, who has been advocated on this issue for quite some time, so thank you for being here. From the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, I'm also joined by Tom Torterici, Executive Director of Legal and Support Initiatives. The primary mission of Moya is to promote the well-being of immigrants, communities, fostering an inclusive environment that supports their safety, stability, and enhances their quality of life, regardless of their immigration status. Ensuring that asylum seekers and migrants have access to the workforce is a crucial part of upholding that mission. New arrivals need and want to work. Our community has been facing a labor shortage ever since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, and gaps remain in several major economic sectors. These gaps include ones in the food industry, construction, and home healthcare agencies. Many of you know, before joining Moya, Commissioner Castro was the Executive Director of a community-based workforce development organization called New Immigrant Community Empowerment, or NICE. He also considers what it takes to prepare newest New Yorkers. He also understands what it takes to prepare newest New Yorkers for the workforce, and both our office and the city as a whole benefit immensely from his leadership. While Moya does not directly work in workforce development, we do collaborate closely with our sister agencies and community-based organizations who are directly involved in the space. I will lay out some of Moya's policies and program initiatives in this field in the following areas: federal advocacy, community-based programming, and worker rights. On the federal advocacy front, one of the most powerful tools to expand access to work authorization is temporary protected status, or TPS. With the stroke of a pen, President Biden can expand this protection to cover additional countries in need. We all saw the impact of the redesignation of Venezuelan TPS in 2023, and through our coalition of over two hundred cities called Cities for Action, our office is pushing for the designation and redecisionation of countries such as Ecuador, Mauritania, and Mali. These countries and many others that we are elevating are facing political turmoil and violence, and families seeking safety and security often end up in our city. By ensuring that individuals with TPS status have access to work opportunities in the formal economy, we can go a long way in promoting the integration into our larger society. Starting in February 2023, Mayor Adams, in partnerships with Cities for Action co-chair, Mayor Brandon Johnson, led a bipartisan group of mayors and county executives participating in the Here to Work campaign, which calls on President Biden to take executive action to increase access to employment authorization for immigrants already in the United States, including spouses of U.S. citizens, Dreamers, who missed the DACA cutoff criteria, and longstanding immigrants. There are also some other federal victories that might have gone under the radar. For example, through our advocacy along Mayor Adams and forty-two other mayors and county executives, we pushed USCIS to ensure a temporary final rule to automatically extend expiring employment authorization for five hundred and forty days. This rule will ensure our new arrivals don't lose the jobs that they've worked so hard for due to processing delays at the federal level. Now turning to community-based programming. In addition to our federal advocacy, Moya has also funds more than fifty organizations throughout the five boroughs that provide a multitude of services to our local immigrant community. Our longstanding legal service program, such as the newly branded Moya Legal Support Centers and the Asylum Legal Assistance Network, are helping to expand the capacity of legal service providers to meet the needs of all immigrant New Yorkers. The city-funded providers work to increase access to new federal pathway status such as Deferred Action for Labor Exploitation, or DALE, as some of us refer it to as, which provides work authorization and protection from deportation to immigrants who have been exploited by their employers. These providers also operationalize referral systems in collaboration across partners to ensure that immigrants receive support for whatever form of relief which they are eligible. The Acts Moya and the Moya Legal Support Hotline both provide immigrants with worker rights and workforce development opportunities. Since the beginning of the asylum seeker humanitarian crisis, Moya has provided almost one million dollars to organizations that provide OSHA and SST training, both of which are needed to work on construction sites in New York City. These opportunities available to our newest New Yorkers have provided access to the high-demand economic sectors to thousands of new immigrants, including an increased number of women, as detailed in recent reports by the city. It's important to know that OSHA and SST training are only available in English and Spanish, both among nonprofit providers and in the private market in New York City. A very limited number of trainers nationwide offer services beyond these two languages. That said, workforce training systems and offerings are catching up with demographic changes, and Moya and OWASO are exploring how to build capacity in additional languages. With philanthropic funding, Moya has established the Innovative Immigrant Navigator Network. In this network, nine immigrant-serving community-based organizations identified and chose five hundred recently-arrived participants to receive assistance from longtime immigrant mentors. We're currently reviewing the data to evaluate the program, but initial trends show that beyond fulfilling basic needs, providing referrals, and connecting asylum seekers to job opportunities, this program has also helped foster warm, welcoming, inclusive, and safe spaces where newest arrivals can thrive. Moya also allocated over one million of city funding to nonprofit orgs and public library branches to launch eighty-five English learning and support centers for immigrant New Yorkers across the city. Moya English Learning and Support Centers are located across the city to support longtime and recent-arrived immigrant New Yorkers learning English and also to connect them to city resources. This program helps non-native English speakers gain the tools they need to thrive in their workspace at school and elsewhere around the city. The centers use We Speak NYC, an award-winning curriculum developed by the City of New York, as a tool to teach English and educate New Yorkers on city resources and services. The centers support immigrant New Yorkers by providing more information on resources, introducing the class, making referrals to social and legal services, and acting as a hub for English-language learning in their community. Now turning to worker rights. Most asylum seekers that have entered the city are not immediately eligible for work authorization and try to find opportunities in the informal economy instead. That's why we're building awareness of protections that are available to all workers, regardless of their immigration status. We applaud both the council and councilmember Hanif for putting together the Immigrant Worker Bill of Rights bill that we are now working to implement alongside the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. In collaboration with the city council, Moya and DCWP updated existing Worker Bill of Rights to highlight protections and resources available to immigrant workers. The updated Bill of Rights is being disseminated through a link NYC kiosks and social media platforms for both agencies. It also has been distributed to newly-arrived immigrants in HERC systems in the top ten languages per Local Law Thirty, as well as into the temporary languages designated by Local Law Thirteen. Finally, last month, on May Day 2024, Moya and DCWP hosted an ethnic and community media roundtable where we discussed the newly expanded Worker Bill of Rights. This roundtable was part of Moya's monthly meetings to share information on the city's available resources and services. Mayor Adams and Commissioner Castro recognized that much remains to be done. That's why we're looking forward to working closely with city council to find solutions that prepare our newest New Yorkers for the workforce. New York City will benefit from the resilience, adaptability, and experience that asylum seekers and migrants bring, just like the generations of immigrants before them that built the place we call home. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to recognize we've enjoyed my councilmember de la Rosa. So I think we'll start just jumping into some questions. We might mix it up, and since we have representatives from three distinct entities, and also give our colleagues a moment to ask questions, and then circle back to you all. So thank you for that. So I guess we'll start with Moya. Could you describe what resources specifically? I guess first in terms of total funding that has been dedicated to workforce development? And then you did note one or two programs here. Anything else you'd like to add to that?
I'm happy to chair, and feel free to cut me off if I talk way too much. But so as you know, Moya has historically not led on workforce development programs. However, many of the programs that we do have have elements of workforce development. But I'll talk about three, which are the Navigation Centers, our English Learning Centers, which I discussed in our Immigrant Navigator Program. As you know, the asylum seeker resource Navigation Centers really open to provide services to folks with basic survival skills across the five boroughs. I'll talk about the two that were specifically funded to provide SST and OSHA training. So those are La Colmena and NICE. Funding that was provided to them in fiscal year twenty-four. For NICE, three hundred and fifty thousand was allocated, and La Colmena, a hundred and twenty-five. They, both La Colmena and NICE, have a variety of deliverables, but both include SST and OSHA. For La Colmena, the OSHA trainings that they're required to provide per month are at least twenty to thirty, SST twenty to thirty as well. And for NICE, it's a bit bigger, but I think it's actually the same. It's thirty-five to forty OSHA trainings and thirty-five to forty SST trainings. And that's just for workforce-specific under the umbrella of our Navigation Centers.
So in terms of, I guess just fundamentally, how does Moya describe its workforce development efforts?
So I think it's the same way that we describe our efforts when we collaborate with other sister agencies, which is our primary, you know, goal and support that we provide our sister agencies of consulting, providing any legal analysis that we can or policy analysis on immigration trends and issues that are coming. Because Commissioner Castro comes from the informal work sector, working for NICE for a couple of years, we've pivoted a bit and have been a bit more, to an extent, involved in conversations with our sister agencies. Here, during this tenure, what we have done, which hasn't existed previously, is that we have developed, again, one, the Navigation Center would be a programming example, and the other programming example would be the Immigrant Navigator Program that was created to sort of address this need. But it really comes from the experiences that our commissioner brings to the table.
So just for clarity, the immigrant, I'm sorry, I'm going to call, I'm going to call it the wrong thing. Hold on one second. Everything is called a Navigation Center these days, so I lose myself. So in terms of the Navigation Network, was that specifically set up for workforce? Or was it an overall kind of more holistic approach to integration and support?
Overall, holistic approach to support. I think at the very beginning of recent arrivals I think at the very beginning of recent arrivals coming to the City of New York, what was important was to provide basic survival skills for individuals. And that's why the organizations that participate, but also the services that they provide, provide a more holistic approach. If I may give you an example, for example, Mistica and your district, it's one of those locations that you walk in and, you know, you get an array of services, from food to other things. So the idea was really to provide folks a pathway into whatever district and/or a borough they were in, but also we knew that some of these organizations would provide more than, you know, more than others, given their ties to the local community.
In terms of the, you noted the one million dollar city investment in the program that is launched through the libraries, and you noted eighty-five English learning and support centers, which is fantastic, but when you do the math, that amounts to, if you, if we were equitable and everyone got the same, it's an eleven thousand dollar per site investment. Can you talk to me a little bit about what eleven thousand dollars buys you out of site?
I don't know if it's eleven thousand per, but I can get that for you.
I just did the dirty math, so like, assuming, assuming everyone, we're just equitable. It's a great effort, and obviously what I'm getting at here is that one million dollars for eighty-five sites is woefully inadequate. So tell me what, this is obviously, you've launched this, and we want more, to be clear. Tell me what we've got for that.
Well, I can, I can say that previously, our, the English language learning centers were referring to them as, the curriculum we speak was primarily all volunteer. So the eleven K or whatever it might be is actually pretty significant in what people were getting before, because previously it was a full volunteer program where CBOs would sign up, take our training, we would provide them our materials, but they weren't provided with any sort of funding. Commissioner Castro thought it was very important to, at the very least, provide something to either, you know, align staff for the support, the space support, you know, basic stuff like even toilet paper, right? It raises the cost. So I would argue back and say that initially it was fully volunteer. Now it's more, and if I may add, on the library piece, the vision here has always been, how and where do we go to provide a full network and support for people? Libraries for many people in districts across the city, it's a lifeline for not only just the services that you go to, but the communities that we build. And the vision was really that, right? To bring these services into the libraries around the five boroughs, to provide recent arrivals, immigrants with services, even outside of the scope of the curriculum that we were providing.
So what I heard is we're doing better and supporting what was once fully volunteer-led. God bless every volunteer who has worked in our communities and will continue to do work. Okay, and from your estimation, if, I would guess, do you agree we could use additional investment in this program?
You know what I'm gonna say, Chair?
Yes, so for the record, yes. We all agree, we could use additional investment. If we were to build the capacity to really, you know, expand this program to meet the need, right? Because we know all the libraries, all the nonprofit providers are well under-resourced, right? There's just a lot more need than there is capacity at this point. Tell me, what would you recommend our city provide to be able to? I wish fully meet the need, but at least adequately fully.
Well, if I may add to some of the data that you requested, it's ten organizations getting ten K. The library branches, which are the Queens, Brooklyn, and Manhattan, they're getting two hundred and fifty K per branch, per library branch. I would say that it's early to tell, Chair, because this is the first year that we're launching this, and I think potentially after this year, we will have more to say, but you know.
I hear you, thank you. We'd like to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember Brooks Powers on Zoom. So thank you for being here, Councilmember. So how does Moya's description of workforce development compare to the needs and requests of immigrant workers and what nonprofit workforce development has been telling you? So what I'm asking is, do you, I assume you're receiving feedback from our nonprofit workforce development providers? Have you been meeting with them?
Yeah, I'll begin, and then if I may ask my colleagues from SBS, because I think you're referring to a very specific, or if you're not, please correct me, subset of organizations. We have been meeting with primarily the day labor organization, most recently a couple of months ago with OASO and I think SBS as well, to really just hear from them and the coalition of five organizations around the city. And I'll also note for the record, we have been meeting with the National Day Labor Organizing Network, Organization Network, Endalon, which is a national organization providing support to the five centers that I mentioned, but also have been working nationally. The work that we've done with Endalon in specific has been to really learn, lessons learned in addressing large numbers of folks increasing in the informal work sector. The feedback from, you know, again, I don't know if SBS, if you want to share anything on the day labor organizations, because I think that's what you might be.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I need more coffee this morning. I guess you mentioned the day labor organizations, you mentioned Endalon. Can you maybe list for me what other, what other workforce development organizations you're meeting with, the frequency with which you're meeting? And then finally, what you're hearing from those organizations and how it relates to kind of the work that you're planning or the work that needs to be built out?
Yeah, and again, I think, and I'm not trying to, you know, not answer your question, but I think that the framework here is that Moya, again, our charge and role like has never really been to directly work or create workforce development. We have been in consultation with the two offices that are here. The extent to which we've met with these organizations have been the two that I mentioned. And with Endalon in specifically, we were also, you know, discussing, you know, federal advocacy, things to that extent. But I don't know if my colleagues here, who are more in touch with some of the other organizations that provide support, can speak a bit more like the feedback that they're providing.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember. I'm happy to speak to, I think, a couple of items that are relevant to this line of questioning, specifically on sites, construction site safety training. We partner with multiple day labor organizations to allow the broad delivery of construction site safety training citywide, some of which were referred to by Lorena in her testimony. Those include the New York Committee for Occupational Safety and Health in Manhattan, the New Immigrant Community Empowerment in Queens, the Workers' Justice Project in Brooklyn, La Colmena in Staten Island, and Catholic Charities in the Bronx. We also deliver construction site safety training through our Workforce One hub centers across the five boroughs. And since 2018, we have offered that training in multiple languages based on a DOB identification of construction workforce participants with limited English proficiency from that time. So we offer the training in English, Spanish, Polish, Russian, Cantonese, and Mandarin. The, in addition to that work with nonprofits and Workforce One offering construction site safety training, a community partners program is a large part of our Workforce One service delivery. And I'll talk to you a bit about our community partners program. Okay, patience.
Is there, is there consideration of doing, of adding Arabic or French to those, to the list of languages that you just mentioned?
Yes, we're very interested in further increasing language access to that training, and we'll work with our partners in the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development on, you know, understanding those needs as they, as those individuals present themselves and receive work authorization so that we can increase access.
It's, I'm, just so you know, we had a hearing, and it is a huge gap, a huge, huge gap that I still, I mean, French, go figure, New York City. We don't even have resources in French. So I would strongly encourage that we get it done yesterday, French at least, Arabic at minimum, and then the other languages are obviously more complicated, but those are two foundational that will reach populations where there is a real lack of support in language accessibility.
Understood, Councilmember. And, you know, SBS's role in delivering this training citywide is a result of, you know, a law passed by the council, I believe, in 2017, right? We want to increase safety on construction work sites across the city that involve construction and demolition. We don't want to reduce access to entry-level jobs for new New Yorkers or other New Yorkers. And so SBS was tasked with providing, ensuring that broad access to the training was accessible. And it's through that commitment that we have stably offered this training across our network of Workforce One centers and in partnership with nonprofit organizations who also receive, you know, other support from city council discretionary funding and through other city agencies such as Moya. I wanted to talk a bit about our work in Workforce One with community partners on this theme of nonprofit partnerships. Our Workforce One centers work with over three hundred community partners citywide, and they expand the impact of Workforce One work through outreach, recruitment, holding community-wide events that help us reach more job seekers, and by referring clients that they serve through their own missions to Workforce One for additional services and matching with employers or other training connections. We organized an info session at the initiation of our American DreamWorks Initiative in October, November, attended by about fifty of our community partners, and we have over forty active community partners partnering with our system to provide services for asylum seekers from ESL, legal assistance, connections to access to temporary housing, assistance with filing for asylum and work authorization, food, clothing, access to public benefits, and proper identification.
Thank you so much, and just for the record, Workforce One centers are only accessible for people with work authorization?
No, Chair. I'm really happy you asked that, because I don't want to leave this hearing with that understanding across the city. Some of our services, based on our federal funding, are restricted to individuals who have received work authorization. So those are any trainings that we provide that are federally funded and actual matching with employers. It's important, you know, Workforce One operates on a dual-service network, and so we want the employers to whom we're referring candidates to be clear that we're connecting them with candidates that will allow them to be in compliance with their mandates, to only employ folks who are authorized to work. However, the remainder of our Workforce One services are accessible to any new New Yorker, or any New Yorker over the age of eighteen. And those include, thank you, Yuri, our intake appointments, career services, activities such as workshops, supportive services, referrals, trainings like our construction site safety training that are provided with city tax levy dollars. We work on developing resumes that help them highlight their relevant experience, whether they acquired it here or in another country, preparing for interviews. Some of the workshops we offer, you know, include understanding the American workplace to help them adapt to workplace norms here. And then if they're work-authorized, we go on to the job search assistance and job connection services and any federally-funded trainings.
Thank you, thank you. And I understand that from Moya's perspective that this hasn't been their primary focus, and it's a relatively new area of support, of exploration, obviously a really critical one. Is, does Moya plan to kind of expand their effort in this, in workforce development? And if so, how?
I mean, if the last two years tell you anything, you really can't plan for much because things sort of evolve, but I'll say that we'll continue to support our sister agencies as the needs arise. Obviously, this is an important issue for immigrant New Yorkers. We're learning a lot from some of the pilots that we've put out, including the English Learning Language Support Center. I know I didn't really touch on this, but if I may, on the Immigrant Pure Navigator Program, which is actually one of the things that I think Commissioner Castro is most proud of. This was funded by Private Philanthropy. It's a small group of people, but it's five hundred people. Twenty-four mentors and twenty-five mentees to create, to show them the ropes around the City of New York. So the question that we ask ourselves is like, how do we create like this comadre network or like a network of, you know, local support for recent arrivals who have no ties in the City of New York? The curriculum that was built out for this particular program consists of a few components. The first one is to, is to build relationships from old and new migrants. The second is to talk about conversations, like how do you find work if you're undocumented? How do you find a babysitter if you're living in this neighborhood? What I can say from that program in particular, it has been successful. And again, we're pulling some of the data, the program isn't over yet, but the real sort of goal here was to create longstanding relationships about mentors and mentees. But again, it's something that we're proud of, we're still building it out. But time would tell, Chair, I think that we're obviously, and given the commissioner's background, well-versed in this subject, so I think we'll continue to support. But as far as planning, I think we're looking at, just to see what our pilots will tell us and then develop issues as they grow.
I appreciate that, and, you know, I have to push back just a little bit on the notion that this is new, or you cannot plan for. I think we are well past, as an immigrant city, claiming that we don't know what to do. We have an enormous amount of expertise in workforce development across the city. The question becomes, can we, do we appropriately scale up? Are we listening to the feedback we're receiving from our partners on the ground? And, you know, are we, are we able to meet that need? So, you know, I think the expertise is clearly here. The question is, are we offering the resources to allow them to scale up appropriately? So in terms of, so just specifically, so does Moya direct any specific funding for workforce at this moment?
The two that I mentioned, well, not, it's, I would say it's specifically because it's the Navigator Centers, just the two organizations, like Colmena and NICE, are the two that are specifically providing OSHA and SST. So those are the two that I can specifically say.
Got it. And in terms of, when, do, does Moya work with nonprofits and/or partner agencies when they're putting out RFPs for this work?
I would, I would say yes, and when you say this work, do you mean just?
The broad workforce development. We know it's scattered across multiple agencies. We know many nonprofits are tapping in and responding. We'd like to know as the agency that holds the expertise, right, around policies and approaches as it relates to immigrant, immigrants across New York City. Are you able to go to SBS and say, this proposal doesn't, this RFP may or may not work for these purposes? Are you going to the Department of Education and saying, these proposals may or may not work for these purposes, and holding to a kind of a standard of effective approaches?
So I'm certainly not the expert on RFPs. So I'm, I'm certainly not the expert on RFPs, and I know that's an entire sort of realm, but I'll say that as issues come up, sister agencies have reached out. When it comes to Moya and the RFPs that we have put out, I can say that there are, you know, there's one that we're currently working on that, you know, Tom, feel free to, to jump in, but on the Legal Support Centers in particular, where there's feedback that we get from providers. In regards to the other, I, I can't speak on that because I, on other agencies, because I haven't been a part of those conversations, but I'm happy to circle back if, if that's contrary to what I'm stating.
No, I think, I would, I would expect all the city agencies, if, if Moya is, is the entity, right, whose role is to hold the best practice and policy for a particular population, that every city agency should be vetting their proposals, their RFPs that are working to impact this community with you all, to get your good eyes and expertise on it. It, it is a missed opportunity for, for agencies to work independently. We'd like to recognize Councilmember Hanif, and we'd also like to offer her the opportunity to make a statement on the legislation we're hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairs Aviles and Feliz, for holding today's important hearing and for including Intro 216 on today's agenda. I want to also thank Deputy Speaker Ayala and Councilmember Brewer for introducing this bill alongside me. I also want to express gratitude to Brooklyn Defender Services for using the experiences of their clients to help inform this legislation. IDNYC is a valuable resource for all New Yorkers and is especially critical for those who are newly arrived immigrants. However, due to the administration's failure to properly operationalize the application process, many who need an IDNYC are currently unable to get one. Right now, walk-in applications are not permitted, and it is extremely difficult to make an appointment. Just last night, I went on the website, which is very challenging to operate, and was unable to make an appointment. It is clear that more slots, including walk-ins, need to be made available, and the online interface needs to be more user-friendly. Additionally, when people are able to get an appointment, they are often rejected due to unclear and arbitrary implementation of requirements regarding document eligibility and the process for decision appeals. These barriers to access are leaving people without the proper identification to carry out a number of important tasks, including completing a work permit application or job application, both of which require some form of government ID. As the city looks to decrease the dependence of new arrivals on the shelter system, helping people get to work is of the utmost importance. There are also massive human costs to lacking the ID needed to navigate basic day-to-day activities in the city, such as a parent being unable to enter a school to pick up their child. Intro 216 would address these issues by instituting a set of reforms for the IDNYC application process, including requiring the administration to, one, make same-day and walk-in appointments available at IDNYC enrollment centers; two, provide adequate in-person application appointments to match the growing demand for IDNYC cards; three, develop a training program for IDNYC workers on the application process; and four, provide an appeals system for applicants who have been denied IDNYC cards. I am sure that the administration would agree that the establishment of the IDNYC program is one of the cities, city government's greatest successes over the past decade. We have created a resource that plugged a gap that has existed for our communities for decades. Now it's time to make sure that those who need this resource can access it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hanif. I just want to talk a little bit about worker protections. So we know labor traffickers have been very proactive and aggressive in their outreach to recent arrivals who are being exploited because they do not have worth or work authorization or legal status yet. What has Moya and SBS done proactively to reach out to these populations preemptively ahead of these bad actors?
Thank you, Councilmember. In terms of proactive outreach to new New Yorkers, I'll refer back to some stats I shared in our testimony. We've received lists of applicants for work authorization from the New York State Department of Labor. We've also received lists from our partners and city agencies that are providing shelter for new New Yorkers, and we have proactively reached out to contact nearly 9,000 asylum seekers. This involves, you know, phone calling, text messaging, and emails to inform them of the services of Workforce One and encourage them to connect. In addition, we've participated in, in many resource fairs where we are sharing our translated materials that introduce the system and its services. We've translated, we've created a palm card that includes a QR code that connects to the American DreamWorks website, which is, you know, a simple resource that helps folks share contact information with SBS and Workforce One so that we can provide further outreach to them, and through those efforts, we have served thus far a total of 5,590 New Yorkers through the Workforce One system.
And is the, the bulk of your outreach is in person with the cards? You said you, you've texted?
Yes. We've called, texted, and emailed new New Yorkers whose contact information we've received. In addition, we're doing in-person outreach through, through nonprofit partners, through events, resource fairs, in many cases organized by elected officials, other organizations, and we also stood up the American DreamWorks landing page to have a simple entry point for both job seekers and employers who want to connect to Workforce One services, just to have a, a simple landing page to collect their contact information for follow-up, to either onboard them into the system with jobs to which we could match new New Yorkers, or if they're individuals, to, to connect them to Workforce One staff directly.
And are, are you maintaining metrics on the effectiveness of the outreach, and have you received feedback around unscrupulous actors or bad actors? Complaints?
I don't, I'm not aware that we've received complaints about bad actors. Alongside our, our own materials, we do share materials developed by the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection focused on workers' rights. We display that information at our Workforce One Centers, and we also share it on our mobile unit or, or outreach materials with Workforce One. In addition to those new New Yorkers who do complete workshops at a Workforce One Center, we're offering a workshop on knowing the American workplace or understanding the American workplace, which includes content about workers' rights in English and in Spanish.
Thank you. We'd like to recognize Councilmember Ariola has joined us. Thank you, Councilmember. I guess, what other organizations has Moya maybe coordinated with around this issue of protecting newly arrived people and, you know, exploitation in the workforce?
Thank you, Chair. The Department of Consumer and Worker Protection is the primary agency focused on informing the public about bad employer actors. Moya works to amplify the Workers' Bill of Rights and want to recognize and thank the Council and Chair Hanif for revising the Workers' Bill of Rights and bringing that forward. That information's distributed throughout our network. So basically, through the small portfolio of programs that Moya oversees, the case management and navigation sessions, tens of thousands of them, with individual community members, are touchpoints through which information about avoiding, recognizing and avoiding employer exploitation and fraud can, can be transmitted. The Action NYC Hotline, or Moya Immigration Legal Support Hotline, received 65,000 calls last calendar year and refers individuals who have complaints about employer abuses to the Office of New Americans Hotline so they can report through the New York State Channel.
Do you have a sense of how much reporting has been done? Out of those 65,000, is there like a percentage sensibility about that?
I don't have a clear number, but my anecdotal understanding is not much. There are other better pathways for reporting employer abuse.
And, and what would be the better pathways?
The Office of New Americans Hotline through New York State, since the Department of Labor and the New York State Attorney General's Office is a, is a good pathway on most of the materials that exist, the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection as well.
I wanted to add one more touchpoint. The language, the English Learning and Support Centers, as I mentioned, uses We Speak curriculum. Season two, I think, provides information about worker protection and career preparation, so that's disseminated through the, the actual curriculum that students take.
Are there other, excuse me, are, are there other creative mechanisms that Moya might be exploring to ensure that migrants, regardless of work authorization status, are being prepared for the formal economy?
I mean, I think, I mentioned, I think, one of the more creative ones that we've had is the Immigrant, Immigrant Navigator Program that I mentioned, which is really, you know, creating, creating community and like, you know, and, and that's sort of the idea with that pilot. I'll say that in addition to what Tom said, something that the Commissioner has been very, you know, just actively pushing for is ethnic media roundtables, so we can ensure that the public gets information from the sources that they hear at home. So on May Day, Commissioner Castro and the Commissioner for DCWP held a, hosted an ethnic media roundtable to talk about the Worker Bill of Rights. So I would say those two, the more creative one being the Immigrant Navigator Program, and two, really using the media as a source of disseminated information.
Thank you. And has Moya engaged with any workers that have been victims of labor rights violations that may be eligible for deferred action? And if so, how have you handled these cases?
Thank you. Moya's in office has not engaged directly with those individuals. However, Moya has been in conversation with the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to get information out about DALE or Deferred Action for Labor Enforcement. We've also provided materials and information and trainings to providers in our provider network, Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, Moya Legal Support Centers. Our legal service providers do screen for eligibility for DALE in the regular course of their comprehensive immigration legal screenings. Typically, the cases are considered complex, so often referred to nonprofit legal service providers that work specifically in the area of workers' rights, such as the Low Wage Workers Initiative and that group of programs, and Immigrant Opportunities Initiative under the Office of Civil Justice.
And has Moya coordinated with the New York Department of Labor on how to access DALE and other city agencies? I'll, I'll just say, like, I, I've asked a number of agencies and no one knows this exists. No one knows that they are able to participate in supporting. So maybe for the record, let me take a step back. If you would explain what DALE is and explain for the record how city agencies can support and participate in accessing these tools for workers?
Thank you. So DALE is a form of deferred action that was introduced by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in January of 2023. Its purpose is to encourage individuals without lawful immigration status, undocumented individuals, to come forward and report employer abuses, because oftentimes they're afraid to come forward and report them out of fear of retribution and retaliation because of the vulnerability that they carry not having status. And so essentially, an individual who has been the victim of an employer abuse, such as, you know, unpaid wages, discrimination, lack of fulfillment of paid leave, you know, that they're entitled to, can first go to a certifying agency, typically a city, state, or federal agency, the appropriate one based on the violation, and request what's called a statement of interest. So the individual would provide all the information related to their case to that agency, let's say it's the Department of Labor in the New York State, and then the Department of Labor would assess that request and issue a statement of interest that that individual could then use as part of their application to USAIS to request deferred action. If granted, deferred action would mean that the federal government agrees to not attempt to enforce removal of that individual for a period of approximately two years, although it can vary on a case-by-case basis. They would also be eligible for employment authorization for that period.
Are you aware of how many letters of interest New York State Department of Labor has, has granted over the past year?
I'm not, but I can get back to you on that.
And I guess the question is, is, has DC, has DCWP granted any letters of interest over the past year?
I can get back to you on that number.
Great, and I'd love to know how Moya is planning to engage with other city agencies around informing them, around how they can participate and use this tool to support workers who are being exploited?
Understood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think we're gonna, I'm gonna pass it over to my colleague, Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chair Vidas, for all the questions, and thank you to the agencies for all the information. So a few questions for Moya and OASO, but before that, I just want to reiterate two things. Number one, two years later after the migrant crisis, we need good systems to prep migrants for the workforce, make sure they're being prepped without delays. At the same time, on the issue of employment, the federal government needs to step up. We don't have time to wait or waste. The jobs are available in the public sector and in the private sector. The migrants have specifically come here to work, and we're telling them to wait six, 12, and even 18 months. Wait for what? That is unacceptable, outrageous, and detrimental to our city and our economy. So a few questions, general questions, the first one's for Moya and OASO. Talk to us about the general budget for your office and how much is allocated for the issue of migrants, workforce, and everything else?
Thank you. For programming overall, this is Moya contracting with immigrants serving nonprofits across a variety of service areas, including navigation, case management, legal services, navigation services, including worker training navigations, and some small amounts for worker training. The overall budget is about 7.4 million. In, specifically with respect to OSHA, Lorrana mentioned NICE and La Colmena. La Colmena receives 125,000, and NICE 350,000 in fiscal '24 for that service.
All right. Thank you for the information. OASO has helped many migrants with different applications, TPS, asylum, work permit applications. How many applications have been submitted and how many have been granted? Work, again, work permit applications, asylum, TPS, and all the others.
Hi, I can take that. So we have filed over 20,000 asylum applications, around 12,000 TPS applications, and nearly 20,000 work authorization applications. We file them pro se, so as a pro se clinic, rather than doing full representation, the only way we can know the success of those applications is either through the federal government or by self-report, talking to the clients. So we are working with the federal client to get, through the federal government, to get a data-sharing agreement that will allow us to hear the success metrics of these applications. We know anecdotally that most of them have been successful for work authorization specifically, but we'd like to obviously get more data than that, and we're working on it.
Yeah, so how many for the work permit applications? How many have been granted? Do we have any data on that?
I don't have a full number because we are working with the federal government to get the data-sharing agreement so that we can get that back, but in the meantime, because we don't want to wait for that to get stood up, we're standing up our own call center to be able to call through all our clients and understand where they are in the process.
Okay, and we know the city and the Mayor's Office, all of you have had a lot of conversations with the federal government. with the federal government about help related to funding and also help related to the changes in federal policies. What's the latest on those conversations, funding and also federal policies? If there's any updates from the last time we heard.
Yeah, I'll defer to also on the funding piece, but on on the policy piece, I can talk about three efforts that we've led via Moya with the mayor's office and Mayor Adams, of course, via Coalition of Cities called Cities for Action. Since the beginning, we have led three letters specifically on workforce. The first one on expediting workforce permits, excuse me, the first one on on March twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-three. This letter was signed by more than fifty mayors with bipartisan support, called for, called for, I'm looking for that, faster and more equitable access to work authorization. The outcome of this, about a month later, USCIS responded to the letter and said that it already began working on many of the policy recommendations. The second one, which was referenced in the committee report issued on on February twelve, twenty-twenty-four, the Coalition of 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 mayors, forty-three mayors, to be exact, requested that USCIS urgently issue a permanent automatic extension of work authorization in the form of a temporary final rule or TFR that extend work permits for five-hundred-and-forty days or longer. The outcome was that on on April fifth, USCIS issued a new TFR extending the work authorization. So major win, lots of claps in our office when that came out. And the latest that we're working on right now that is quite important, on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, a letter led by Chicago Mayor Brandon Johnson and our mayor Eric Adams, we sent a letter to Biden's administration calling for work authorization for both recent arrivals and longstanding undocumented immigrants in the absence of of the long-awaited comprehensive immigration reform. What this letter is calling for would be to expand an existing program that grants parole to the spouses and parents of U.S. military service members to include the one-point-two million undocumented spouses of U.S. citizens. You know, we hope that we're going to continue and and continue to push on this effort because so many so many U.S. citizens, you know, you can't, you know, you know, you fall in love with who you fall in love with, but there is a marriage tax really and penalty that goes with folks who marry undocumented undocumented individuals who equally provide and and pay taxes and have families here in the United States but have, don't have the ability to amend status without one going back to their home country. Many of them fear that if their visa is denied, they might not be able to come back. That's true, an issue very close to my heart. My twenty-six-year-old nephew hasn't seen his father in seven years because, you know, his visa was denied back back in his home country. And this story repeats itself around the country, so we hope that this effort would be one. And it's really a win-win, right, for for folks who are here? So that's the latest in regard to the national policy landscape, but I'll pass it over to OASO if you want to speak specifically about funding streams.
I don't have information. Sorry, I'm Grace Riddick. I'm the Executive Director of Workforce Diversion and Exit Strategies for the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. My role is primarily to serve as a liaison between our many city agencies working on workforce development, as well as CBOs across the city and the state and federal Departments of Labor. So I'm happy to provide information on any of those initiatives relevant to some of your prior questions, Chair, in addition to the wonderful programs that my colleagues at Moya are spearheading. I will let Masha speak to whether she has information on federal funding relevant to the AHC. I don't have that information for OASO, but we're taking notes and happy to follow up. I can share additional work that our office has been doing to address federal policy in the area of workforce development. So, for example, Chair, you mentioned OSHA and the importance of OSHA training. One of the challenges that we have faced and that we have heard from our CBO partners is that we may have all the site safety trainings in the world here in the city and all the languages that could be offered, but nevertheless, at the federal level, you can only be OSHA-certified if you take an OSHA class with an instructor in a language where the sort of the instructor has been certified in that language. So we have several Spanish-speaking OSHA instructors in the city, but our CBO partners tell us that OSHA has informed them the closest French-speaking OSHA certification instructor is in Washington, D.C. So that seems like a solvable problem, and that's an issue that we brought to the Federal Department of Labor. They have it under review. So those examples are the kinds of things where we look for potential gaps that we hear from across our partners, be they CBOs or city agencies, and then we try to resolve them with what levers we may have as the mayor's office.
Okay. And also, on the three letters that we sent to the federal government, were responsive, any, that we got from them?
Yeah, on, well, we haven't gotten a response on our most recent letter, which was sent in May, but the one in February, the one in March, excuse me, twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, we did receive a response, and USCIS responded stating that they already began working on many of the policy recommendations laid out. In the months following, USCIS processing time did improve and has come much closer to compliance. On the second letter, which called for the permanent automatic extension of work authorization, the outcome was what we called for, which was on April fifth, twenty-twenty-four. So I would say they were responsive and have been following some of the recommendations we provided. But again, this is with Mayor Adams and a coalition of additional mayors across the country.
Okay. And how much funding have we received from the federal government for this migrant topic and asylum seeker topic? What's the latest number on that?
We'll have to get back to you on the full number. For the asylum application help center, we receive our funding from the state government.
Okay. How much funding have we received from the state government? What's the latest number on that?
We just finalized an MOU for thirty million and are working on for this kind of past fiscal year, and we're working on an agreement for the next fiscal year.
Okay. How often does Moya meet with our federal partners? Whether it's DLT, President Biden's team, but also federal legislators?
I would I would say, I I can give you a number. I think that Commissioner Castro has met with folks of the administration a handful of times, but I think that some of those conversations are also led by our counterparts at OASO. So I would say a handful of times, but I don't have a specific number, Chair.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the information. A few questions for SBS. So a few questions about the American Dream Works program, but before that, just a general question. This is obviously a new issue for SBS, the issue of advocacy for migrants, including workforce, and much more. How much new funding, if any, has SBS received for these issues related to migrants, asylum seekers?
If I can just comment on the newness of the issue, this has been a surge, and we've had a lot to to learn, to adapt to the surge and and work to meet the needs of this moment. However, you began in your testimony and also Chair Villas by sharing the economic contribution of immigrants in New York City, and we recognize that immigrant New Yorkers are a significant and a valuable part of our workforce. And SBS's focus on serving immigrant New Yorkers with workforce services is not, did not begin with this crisis. As I said, we launched the Washington Heights Center to specialize kind of in that focus in twenty-sixteen, and we serve thousands of immigrant New Yorkers, you know, annually through Workforce One. I believe more than twelve thousand new New Yorkers, if New Yorkers through with foreign roots, if I if I'm not mistaken, on an ongoing basis. To directly focus on your question of additional budget to meet needs relating to this surge, we have met all of the needs for all of the work that we have stood up with existing resources. Workforce One has a funding basis that relies on on federal funding through WEOA, and we have been able to meet the needs of the work that we have performed thus far with that basis of federal funding. There's been no additional funding specifically focused on this need.
Okay. So just to make sure that I understand your answer correctly. So we've obviously always had a workforce program, but since the start of the pandemic, we haven't had any new funding, or not the pandemic, no, since the start of the migrant crisis, we haven't had any new funding for SBS specifically for this program? Just to make sure I understood your answer correctly.
Yes. You know, the mayor has called for additional federal resources to help the city meet the vast set of needs that are that are required to meet the migrant surge, and those include needs in our workforce system. Thus far, we've not received any enhancement of federal resources focused on this population.
Okay. So not one penny for the workforce program, not one new penny? We have what we've had in the past and nothing more?
We have what we've had in the past, and we're grateful for it. You know, if we'd had to build a system like Workforce One to respond to asylum seeker and migrant workforce needs during this crisis, I think it would have been beyond the city's capacity to do so. So the fact that we have a a stable federally-supported workforce system in Workforce One is what has allowed us to be somewhat nimble in responding to this surge.
All right. Thank you for the information. So a few questions about the American Dream Works program. So talk to us about the program. It's obviously a program where you connect work-authorized asylum seekers with businesses and employment opportunities. Tell us more about the program. How does it work? How many employees have registered under it?
Thank you, Councilmember Felice. So American Dream Works describes a website or landing page that we launched in October to help both employers and work-authorized asylum seekers connect with Workforce One, employers to share job opportunities that they were willing to consider new New Yorkers for because they were aligned with, you know, those communities, with that mission of the city to help them work and to help job seekers connect with the resources of our Workforce One Career Center network. The website is accessible to users in approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-two languages, as is typical for city websites, and since October, we've received more than eight thousand views on the website. And the the primary goal of the website is to ask job seekers who want to connect to Workforce One services to share their contact information with us so we can put them in touch with the human beings in the Workforce One network that are expert in serving them, and for employers to, you know, express that interest so that we can engage with them to understand what the job opportunities are, what the requirements are for candidates for those roles, and successfully begin working to to merge those two needs.
And what are the requirements for employers to register for the through the American Dream Works program? And also, how many have registered to date?
We're collecting basic information in the form on American Dream Works, and we do a more robust enrollment of of employers using our Workforce One staff. So we want to know the name of the employer, the location, and some, you know, we want them to express their interest in hiring new New Yorkers. Thus far, two-hundred-and-forty-one businesses have signed up through the portal to express an interest in hiring new New Yorkers. However, our, the the employers that we've worked to connect new New Yorkers to are not limited to those that enroll through the American Dream Works portal. As I said, Workforce One is a, you know, a robust citywide system, and as part of the responsibilities at every every center is business engagement and job development. So currently, I love my team. You guys are so helpful. Currently, we have five thousand jobs, about five thousand jobs, available across the Workforce One system, to which we're attempting to connect all of our candidates, including new New Yorkers.
All right. Five thousand jobs. Okay. And how are potential employers vetted before participating in this program, American Dream Works program?
So we're collecting-
If there's any vetting.
We're collecting information about the the employers, again, the location of their jobs, the requirement for for candidates for those roles, how they're going to accept referrals from Workforce One, how many openings they have, and we're sharing, you know, any standards for our standards for wages. We want to be sure that, you know, they're paying folks a reasonable wage. And currently, we are, we have, in the five thousand-plus employers in the system, they are representing four-hundred-and-eleven businesses citywide that currently have job orders with Workforce One, and I hope that was, I hope that answered your question.
All right. And what are top jobs and industries under this program? I'm sure there's a lot of, you know, jobs available in the food industry, healthcare. What are some of the top industries?
Yeah, so the jobs available in the system really reflect, you know, the range of private-sector jobs available across the city of New York. So in the sector of administrative support and waste management, that's representing about twenty-five percent of existing job orders in the system. As an example, think about security guard jobs, entry-level jobs, and healthcare and social assistance might include home health aid jobs. In the accommodation and food services, we're looking at restaurant workers, food service, food service workers and and businesses of many kinds, including the example I gave in my testimony of the airline catering company to which we connected a new New Yorker. And additionally, jobs in the transportation and warehousing sector, though we're referring candidates, clients of Workforce One to jobs driving and in parking facilities citywide.
And what are the requirements for asylum seekers and migrants to participate in this program? And also, how are these requirements communicated and advertised to the migrants?
So as I said, we try to create very broad access to our services and to our centers. Our centers, as I said, being brick-and-mortar locations, include some resources of real use to new New Yorkers, such as the computer labs. So we, there is no screening for work authorization at the door of a Workforce One center. We do require one piece of ID, and we're flexible on the type of ID. That's because our centers, we have to document to our funders that we're serving adults. That's one limitation on even our basic services. They're available for individuals eighteen and up. So we want we want some verification of age. Other than that, most of the documentation to engage with Workforce One is self-reported. We want contact information, but really importantly, we want information on what that job seeker has done in the past. What are the work experiences they have had previously or in another country that can help us assess their match with jobs in our in our database?
And how are individuals connected to the American Dream Works program? Is that available to individuals living in HERS and also outside of HERS? And also, how are they informed about these opportunities?
Yes. So American Dream Works, as I said, you know, it's a it's a web portal, a landing page, and we promote it through our outreach materials. I think my team has examples of some of the palm cards that we've created that we'd love to share with you today. We have them available in in many languages with a QR code included that connects folks to the American Dream Works portal. Here's an example with the QR code on the back. Great. Thank you, Councilmember Felice, Chair Felice. So we're promoting our web assets, you know, through social media, through social, through advertising, Google search advertising, you know, all all of the ways that we can promote our services. Outreach, it has been a real focus for SBS in this administration. We recognize that, you know, creating broad awareness of the availability of government programming so that the individual who needs that assistance can access it at the point where they're most open to it or that need becomes prominent. I I think it's a pervasive problem of government, and so we're also sharing our resources through partners that are deeply embedded in these communities so that they can help us turnkey the information. We are also participating in events to the extent that we can cover them, and for this surge, you know, our coverage of events has really expanded, and it's our outreach team members, our executive team members, our commissioner, we've done some connection to shelters. We're also working- We've done some connection to shelters. We're also working with shelters to schedule appointments for their clients at Workforce One hub centers closest to them to really create that warm handoff, really lead them to the shelters to be aware of the services. So really every way that we can think of to spread the word about the availability of these services so that folks can take advantage of them. And of course, we want to partner with you all in getting out the word. And are open to your suggestions for broadening that outreach.
Okay. Does SBS take steps to prioritize outreach of specifically migrants who are susceptible and vulnerable to exploitation by unscrupulous employers or human trafficking?
So I think through our community partners network, if we encounter clients in Workforce One who are struggling with any of those challenges, we would connect them to wraparound services through those partners. One example of a new partnership that we've developed in response to this particular crisis is with the Educational Alliance. They were hosting, they've hosted a number of types of activities for migrants during this surge. But they have been assisting folks with, who are kind of emerging from the process of work authorization with some of those last steps. And we have sent staff from our Washington Heights Centers to their legal clinics. We've covered seven of those just since March. Met with 167 participants that they have served through that program, about 70 of which we've onboarded as Workforce One clients. In addition, they're hosting kind of Welcome to New York Resource Fairs, serving a broader set of new New Yorkers, and we're staffing those with our outreach team. So again, engaging in partnerships with mission aligned nonprofits is a critical way of increasing awareness of our services and reaching new New Yorkers.
How much funding is dedicated specifically to the American Dream Works program apart from funding already allocated to the Workforce One programs?
So we've used existing resources, primarily federal resources, to cover the American Dream Works activities.
So no new money for the American Dream Works program?
We have not received any new federal resources for American Dream Works.
How many staff members are dedicated specifically for this program?
For the American Dream Works initiative specifically, we've created a team of five SBS staffers.
Sorry, how many?
Excuse me?
How many, sorry?
Five SBS staff people who for the past several months have been primarily focused on the American Dream Works initiative. That has included, you know, outreach activities, organizing hiring events, staffing outreach events, and importantly, doing some, you know, attempting to do some real time tracking of our success in connecting New Yorkers to these services so that we can adapt. Generally though, we are, as in keeping with the answer I gave you about our budget, we're using existing resources within Workforce One and across SBS to staff these activities.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, in terms of the federal funding that goes to SBS, can you, what percentage of the budget is federally funded?
I'm not sure I have that answer for you today, but I'm happy to get back to you. It's the vast majority of our budget for Workforce One is federal funded. And it's allocated by formula based on unemployment rate. And I believe the budget is just over $30 million annually to operate the Workforce One network and fund some of the WDD staff that support the delivery of those programs.
And what restrictions come with federal funding as it relates to immigrant communities?
Again, we have to serve adults. And in terms of the services we can deliver through Workforce One, we can deliver all services up until the point of connection to federally funded training or matching to a job. Not, we cannot refer an individual who's not self-reported that they have work authorization to a job.
So you have to have work authorization in order to get the referral to the job?
Through Workforce One, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to understand the gap. So in terms of, in terms of the, if the vast majority is federally funded and you can only refer to actual jobs for folks that have work authorization, how do, how does anyone else without authorization receive services? And what's the funding mechanism for that?
So we are not restricted from onboarding clients to Workforce One prior to their receipt of work authorization. And that's why the lists that are shared by NISDOL, OWASO, our partners who are providing shelter are so important. The shelter directors, for example, they are, they understand within their client population individuals who have applied for work authorization or may have received work authorization. We're coordinating so that they can schedule those folks for intake appointments with Workforce One. We are also receiving lists of clients who've applied for work authorization with the city's support. Those are the clients, nearly 9,000 at this point, to which we're doing proactive outreach using telephone calls, texts, and emails to inform them of the services, drive them toward Workforce One's doors.
So how are the other needs being resourced? Is that city dollars or? I'm trying to understand the gap here. If a majority of the funding is federal and it works up to a certain limitation, I'm trying to understand where is the other resources coming from to address the remaining needs?
So within Workforce One, again, I would refer back to our network of community partners for which we can refer candidates who have needs that we can't meet through the system. And perhaps OWASO would take a question about other support for workforce services outside of our system.
Sure, thank you. So to address one of your questions and to just expand a bit on the commissioner's answer, those who have applied for EADs and are somewhere in that six to 18 months' time are eligible for support services from SBS. And so one of the things that we've been working to do is to collaborate and identify across their 22 different centers where they have centers that are near to individuals we know that have applied to EADs and have not yet engaged. So actually, just last week at the SBS Long Island City Center, we did a sprint over three days for the clients in one of the larger sites that we have in Long Island City. And we're able to get, I believe, 41 clients pre-screened for authorization and get their resumes completed. Because obviously, resume writing, an English resume is something that we can assist with if you don't speak English fluently. So that's one example. Another I would give is that, as you identified previously, ESL is a huge need for our population. For many of the asylum seekers, ESL is workforce development because it is incredibly difficult to get a job in America if you do not speak English or Spanish. Spanish is slightly easier in some communities. So to that end, we have heard from our CBO partners that their ESL classes are full, they are at capacity, they have gotten no new funding. So very much to the credit of my colleagues at SBS and other city agencies. We are currently working on a pilot for the fall between SBS and District 79 to think about how we can get District 79-based instructors in ESL to use space that's not currently being used, at times is not being used, at Workforce One centers that are nearby to where we know that we need, we have folks that need to learn how to speak English. So those are the kinds of things that we're trying to do. We haven't received more funding. But I think we're being quite scrappy and creative where we can be to figure out how we can bring things together across agencies to create solutions that begin to address some of these problems.
And how many, going back to some of the earlier questions, can you repeat again how many work permit, work permit applications we've submitted? And also, I know you mentioned you don't have a hard number on how many have been approved, but if you could give us the roughest number on more or less, how many work permits have been approved?
So we have completed 20,000 work authorizations, 20,000 asylum, and 15,000 TPS. I would have to get back to you on the rough number because while both health and hospitals and the Department of Labor have their own efforts to talk to these clients and get the numbers, I don't have that on handy. But those are still self-reports. And I think what we ultimately want is data from the federal government about who has applied and who hasn't applied. We're working on the MOU now. What I like to say sometimes is as a program manager, I want the data right away. But as a former agent of the Soviet Union, I want the governments to make sure my privacy is protected before any information is shared. So I understand that, you know, it's important that we go through a careful privacy MOU process to get it, but I am looking forward to it. And I want to know exactly how many of our applications were accepted. Did more get accepted on Fridays or on Mondays? Which application assistants worked on them? As a program manager, I will get to a place where I have that information.
Okay, if you were to guess though, would you say more than 1,000 have been approved?
If I were to guess, which I feel like I've been advised not to do.
We can get back to you.
No, 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 I'm fine. I think that, I think that I have enough anecdotal data to feel like at least half of them have been approved.
At least half of the 20,000?
Yeah.
Super rough guess, okay.
Super rough guess, but I feel good about it.
Just an educated guess, right?
If I may, we do have self-reported data from the sites that have rolled out a new set of questions as part of their case management program. So that's now currently active across 18 of our H and H managed sites. And so we do have self-reported EAD data for those sites and we can at least share that number afterwards.
Okay, and a few questions for SBS. How many asylum seekers and migrants have obtained, have obtained employment through workforce or the American Dreams Program based on the numbers that have obtained the work authorization, whatever that number is?
So thus far, we've provided services to 5,500 new New Yorkers. We have referred 2,000 of those unique individuals to jobs with local employers. And we will be able to report out at the end of the fiscal year on actual successful connections to employment for those job seekers. And the reason for that lag is just what we're required to do in terms of validation of hires because of our federal funding source. So we're asking the employers to verify and share payroll data that validates the hire for us. So what we shared in the testimony were the stories we're hearing from the job seekers about the successes they're beginning to have through the connections that we have made. And as we're able to validate those hires with employers, we'll be able to fill in the details about successful connections to employment.
And what's the process like for an asylum seeker or migrant to move through this program? Getting access, applying, how quick are the appointments, and anything else in the process?
So if they are accessing our services through our Workforce One centers, which is what we want primarily, because those centers, you know, we've got, most of those centers are, you know, fixed physical locations. It's not an event happening on a single day. They're staffed steadily, they're staffed there nine to five. They're staffed with language capacity or the ability to connect to translation services. So if they're walking into a Workforce One center, you know, they're receiving, you know, a friendly welcome. They are completing a customer information form that allows us to collect information, basic information about that, like I said, their contact information, name and age. And that, you know, makes them a member of our program. They receive an introduction to services orientation which informs them of all of the services available to them through Workforce One. If we are observing or become, they make us aware of needs they have for supportive services. We're able to consider which community partners we can connect them to to meet those needs. And then they meet with a career advisor, one-on-one, to discuss their experience, their goals. And then we strategize for how to help them move to the next step. Whether that's a career development activity such as a training or meeting with an account manager if they're ready to be connected with a job. And so once they've, you know, assuming they're work authorized, once they've received the support trainings they need, they're referred to an account manager and the account manager helps to screen and match them to job opportunities that we've sourced from local employers. And for candidates who are deemed to match, they're scheduled to connect with that employer in the way that the employer has guided us. So that may mean support from Workforce One, completing an application, being scheduled for an interview, or whatever method the employer has identified as a next step. And they're encouraged to continue using our services until they connect with employment.
Okay, and I have many more pages of questions, but I'll ask a few more and then I'll pass it on to my colleagues who also have questions. So just a few more questions on that topic. And I would also like to recognize Councilmember Rita Joseph. So at what point do we think training migrants and asylum seekers is the proper point? Is it when they're applying for any of these items, or is it after they get the permits?
So we want to connect new New Yorkers to training opportunities when they need it. Our goal is to meet job seekers where they are. That's one reason. We're very pleased that we do have the ability to offer construction site safety training, both through our hub centers and through our community partners. That provides 30 hours of training approved by DOB on fall prevention, drug and alcohol awareness, other topics. And if the individual has managed to access OSHA training, we provide a training supplement that gives them the site safety, the site safety card that's required to work on a, on a city, a city construction site. So our goal is to be able to provide as much training as we can when the job seeker can accommodate it and based on their need. I apologize, I think I said 30 hours of training. It's 40 hours of training in construction site safety.
Okay, and you mentioned that we've assisted, is the number 5,500 asylum seekers and migrants under these programs?
Yes.
Under the workforce and American Dream Works?
That's correct. We've provided services to a total of about over 5,000 new New Yorkers based on our tracking in construction site safety specifically and based on reporting. And again, because we need insight about this work, real time to make decisions, real time, you know, we are asking our partners to share with us in some ways that haven't been, you know, standard across our operations of these programs. But our day laborer partners estimate that about 90% of the, of the folks who've completed training since January of 2022 are new New Yorkers. And so that's more than 3,000, excuse me, 2,500 New Yorkers who've received construction site safety training since January of 2022. Thank you, Yuri.
Okay, so I'll pass it on to Councilmember Gil Brewer. But before that, just want to go over some of the numbers, which kind of signal that it seems like we need additional resources for these programs. Number one, last I heard, we have about 65,000 asylum seekers under our care. Roughly 10,000 whether under the care or not, whether under the HERS or not. More or less 10,000 have work permits.
Oh, no. I just want to make-
Super roughly.
Super roughly, yeah. Don't get me in trouble now.
Yeah, okay. But super roughly, let's say 5 to 10,000 have work permits and we've only assisted about 5,500 under the workforce and American Dream Works?
Yes, we've reached out to more than that. We've reached out to nearly 9,000. Those that have accepted services and actually received services, it's about 5,500 of the nearly 9,000. We've attempted to contact, you know, we haven't made contact with every individual. So we've been unable to reach some. Some have declined services. They're finding their way through other methods. But we are pleased to have connected 5,500 to services thus far.
And just in general, even putting to the side the number of individuals who have obtained the work permits, I think the fact that we have under, we have about 65,000 asylum seekers under our care and only 5,500 have been connected, I think that shows we need a lot of work. We should not wait for people to get work permits, job training, you know, we should, by the time they get the work permits, they should be prepared to work rather than starting training after they get the permits. So I think that the general numbers show that there's a little bit of work in terms of creating a better system so that, you know, we're making sure that these asylum seekers and migrants are able to obtain, you know, economic, financial stability ASAP. So thank you. I'll pause at this. So thank you, I'll pause it there, let's hear from our Chair of Oversight, Gil Brewer.
Thank you very much. So the 6,500, does that include children? 65,000, does that include children? I think it does.
It does, yes, so-
I love the wonderful question, but I just want to say, you know, a baby can't get a job yet.
No, I appreciate that, Councilmembers. So we estimate that approximately 27,000 asylum seekers in our care are available working age adults, meaning they are not children and they are not responsible for childcare.
Yeah, thank you. So I went to visit John Jay, where there is the federal state and city. So it works. So how many centers are like that? Are you going to continue that? I know they have a, the building might be converted by CUNY, blah, blah, blah. So what is the status of that center? Do you have other centers? Does that center work better than anywhere else, et cetera? That's my question, my first question.
No problem. So what you're referring to is our John Jay Center, where we have the federal government onsite-
Yes.
And they're able to receive and take in work authorization applications. So our plan is to continue that partnership. We, we got that space through the help of the state, and they've committed to finding us a replacement when we might have to move out of that space. Today's actually an exciting day, it's the launch of an expansion of that program, where they're now also doing biometrics for our defensive asylum applications, which will directly increase the amount of folks with work authorization. Because as some of you know, even though you apply for asylum and your clock starts for when you can get asylum, if, for when you get authorization, if you miss your biometrics appointment, your clock stops, and then you have to keep waiting. And so we're able to create a one-stop shop for our clients now, where they can, starting today, for defensive applicants, applicants can go there and get their biometrics, therefore reducing that barrier where their clocks would be stopped for that reason. So we're very excited about that. And we are grateful for the federal government and being creative with us and finding a way that they can, kind of policy aside, operationally help increase the amount of folks with work authorization, and we'd like more opportunities like that.
So what, so then, the number of persons that have gone through that, do you know what the number is? I think they told me, but I forget.
I can get back to you about that exact breakdown.
That's not included in the, in the SBS number, in the workforce?
That would be a separate number. It would be a subset of our AHC clients.
Okay, so then, I'm still confused about numbers. The Councilmember Felice was great. So we've got 27,000 in care, some number of that, maybe five to 10, have gotten work authorization of some kind. 5,500 have been helped by SBS, 9,000 reached out to. But it seems to me that there are larger numbers that have been helped, if you count this particular center, John Jay, and I go to, I don't know, centers all the time, Rutgers Church, Project Russo, et cetera, I'm always at those centers. So do we have the total number, or we, who's in charge? That's what I'm trying to find, of this process. I'm having trouble figuring that out, I have to say.
I think that, what I can speak to is from the AHC side, right? We have helped over 50,000 people with some sort of application, TPS, asylum work authorization.
When you say "we," you're talking about all the different groups, Project Russo, Rutgers Church.
I'm just talking about the Asylum Application Help Center.
Okay.
Apart from us, there is a huge kind of coalition of nonprofit partners, some of whom are funded by our Moya partners.
And some not funded, they just do it.
And some not funded, they just do it, and there are people that are seeking help through private attorneys. So there's a whole kind of ecosystem of folks working to get these individuals taking their next legal step.
Okay, I, I, I don't know who's in charge, it's a little loosey-goosey for me, to be honest with you. I'd like to have somebody sort of call in, keep track, so that you can see what the issues are. ESL pisses me off that the mayor cuts ESL, and you guys don't say anything. You're just, oh, that's the mayor, can't do anything. Pisses me off, okay? Because there are waiting lists in the libraries, waiting lists everywhere, and here you're talking about working with District Nine, love District Nine, and finding some funding for ESL. But why don't you speak up and say, "We need ESL." Who's going to answer that question? I mean, this is crazy not to have ESL, this is insanity.
I'm happy to speak to how we're dealing with the need for ESL among clients that we're serving. I believe 78% of the new New Yorkers that we've served through Workforce One have expressed that they have a primary language other than English, so, and ESL is important at every stage of our ability to support them, right? It's important in our marketing materials, it's important in our intake process, it's important when we're supporting them in developing resumes, in our delivery of workshops, and in connecting them to employers. So it really is essential at, at every stage of the process, where we are making referrals to community partners for ESL. The SUNY Educational Opportunity Center and CUNY sites have been a primary resource for us, and we are working to increase our ability to connect Workforce One clients to ESL seats, exploring ways that we can deliver ESL onsite, seeking, you know, additional private resources to expand ESL as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just want to point out, because it does make me angry, I send all these budget hearings, and all we get are cut, cut, cut. So, and there's some stupid RFP out that doesn't make any sense on this topic. The other question I have is the change of addresses. So maybe it's working, you move shelters, then I believe you still have to get something in the mail from the federal government. What is it you still need to get? This is about worker authorization. Is it working if you have your address at the Red Cross on 49th Street? How does that all working or not working, if it's an issue? I get it as a complaint, but maybe I'm wrong.
So I can start with the AHC, but this would apply to all of our migrants in care. Folks that receive federal mail at our shelters can keep the mail, the mail stays there indefinitely so they can go back and receive it. For some of our migrants in care, they're able to use the Red Cross address, that is a nice and run program, so I'll defer to them on the details there if you'd like. And then at the Application Help Center, we always proactively check with folks if they need a change of address form or a change of venue motion, and we will do that for them.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's still an issue, so sometimes the shelter tells, sometimes the shelter doesn't. And so, I mean, I wish, again, I'm not a big 30, 60-day move-out proponent personally, but I do think that somebody should be paying more attention to that issue. Red Cross works, I'm not sure the shelter does.
I think one area that we have been work, trying to work with the federal government are, is making as much as possible, digital as possible.
But there is still one piece of paper that is needed, I believe.
That, exactly, but I think that at least if it was digital, you'd have greater clarity about where it is.
So are you contact, how are you contacting? Because I heard three letters, but I didn't hear any letter about that piece of paper. Who's working on that? Is it the Washington office, which I used to head under Mayor Dickens?
Can you clarify the piece of paper? You mean the actual EAD?
Yes, how do you get the law changed so they can be digital? Who's doing that? Who's working on that?
I'll have to get back to you about that one.
The other issue is childcare. Obviously, a lot of women are working. I think we're not talking exclusively about men here, but it is often. So what are we doing about childcare for Promise NYC, which also got cut by the mayor? What are we doing about childcare? Do you hear it as a problem, either at the workforce or anyplace else? What's going on with childcare for these wonderful families?
I can't speak to the citywide connection to childcare resources. I can say that as we've increased our service to new New Yorkers at our Workforce One centers, especially at the hiring events, there's not one hiring event that I've attended that we haven't seen women clients coming with their children in an attempt to connect to work. And so we've, we've worked to accommodate them at those events, but that doesn't speak to their larger need for quality childcare to, to actually participate.
Obviously, if they're bringing their kids in school time, that's not a good thing.
Often younger children, toddlers.
Okay. We're all trying to make sure that there is childcare. Again, if you could speak up about this, that would be appreciated. Another cut, Promise NYC, excellent program, cut. So we need to have it restored. Obviously, the City Council will do that, should never have been cut. And then my other, just final question at this point, is for the change, the change of policies in the future. So are you, have any sense between the 30 and 60 day? I understand people need to move on, I understand that. You know, the way to go about it would be have a caseworker say, "Do you have friends in Idaho, Texas," or whatever, that's what I would do. But do you have any sense of this 30 or 60 day is having an impact on people not getting jobs because of they have to move all the time? You do see very long lines at St. Bridgetts, and I do worry about, I was at an event last night with a lot of the African language issues, et cetera. So what are we doing specifically for the African community? That would be my final question, in terms of all of these issues, like, are you going to Randall's Island, or are you going to St. Bridgetts? Or what are you actually doing to help that population? Because they don't have much from Washington.
I can start, and then I'm happy to have my colleagues add on as well. So we appreciate the highlight that was brought to the challenges for Black migrants during the hearing in April, and we have made several changes. So one thing I sort of want to call out, the work the AHC has done, they have so far never had an individual come to the center who could not be served. We currently have in care and shelter, as of our most recent numbers, 12 African languages or dialects, at least, beyond Arabic and French. And Chair Villas earlier called out Arabic as a necessary translation, completely agree. It's, we recently had Wolof speakers with their primary language surpass Arabic for people in our care. So it is an incredible issue, and I appreciate you bringing attention to it. This comes back to our collaboration with our CBOs and how very key they are to our ability to identify what asylum seekers need and respond. Councilmember Brewer, I think you actually mentioned Project Russo, an incredible organization that's going above and beyond to serve-
Way beyond.
Yes, absolutely, I agree. So recently, we spoke to them and said, you know, we have folks who would love to get their food certifications or their CDL licenses, but they can't find those programs to study in French. So those CBOs are, that CBO is now offering both of those classes this month to its clients. However, in New York State, you can get your driver's license in 10 different languages, but the CDL test is only offered in English, Spanish, Russian, and what they call Chinese. So we took that to state transportation and said, "Can we please get this language in French? We have 10% of our asylum seekers in care who speak French as their preferred language." So those are a few of the attempts that we're making, and we recognize that there's more to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Councilmember Palladino?
Good afternoon, and thank you Chairs for pushing me up a little bit, I appreciate that. This hearing should, if none other, would show us the frustration that the city is going through right now. It's huge. This is a mountainous task that has been placed upon this city. We have over 200,000, or close to 200,000 migrants in this city right now, 65,000 that we know about. So I commend you for what you're doing and trying to do. We haven't seen anything like this ever in the history of New York City. So while we're trying to place 27,000 adults who do not, most of which do not speak English, so there's so many different accommodations that we need to make in order to find them work, does not surprise me that it's taking the amount of time that it's taking. It certainly would. We talked about construction work, you know, 2,500 construction jobs. Well, we've got union guys who really need to work, and we're placing unskilled workers where they should not be, which could cause some detrimental and dire situations, people's lives put in danger. I'm interested to know, how do we determine if a migrant seeking ID is really the person that they claim to be? What documentation are the migrants presenting when they enter United, this United States and the city of New York? And are they vetted for these jobs that they're going out for? Second question, how are we tracking migrants who leave the shelter system? Is there a system placed to check and see how things are going to work or housing that they are entering after they leave a temporary shelter? There are several different things. There's also something here, and the reason why I'm rushing through this, and I apologize, is because I need to be back in my district no later than 1:30. How do you propose to quickly clear, this, this really troubles me, the backlog of I-765 applications for employment authorizations? Just to give everyone who applies employment authorization, hire more caseworkers? Like, what's the plan? How we plan to rush these people through? You also brought up a CDL license. My husband has every truck driving license known to man, that's what he does for a living. A CDL license is not an easy license to do. So the fact that you do offer it right now in four languages, I think is commendable. When we need to worry about 300 different African dialects, I think that poses a big problem for this city. This city is not equipped. We stressed this back a year and a half ago. We were going to be overburdened, and we are. If this meeting today does not show everybody in the city of New York how we are not equipped to handle what has come through our system, I don't know what does. So I'm going to leave you with that. If you could answer my question about the ID that they show, and how do they prove to be who they say they are? We've got people going into the food industry who are driving these mopeds like mad men and women, okay? We've had crimes committed on these mopeds. They are unlicensed, they are uninsured. We are in a situation that New York City does not know how to get out of, and it's nobody's fault except the gates are open and they just keep flooding in. So I wish you all a lot of luck. If you could answer some of my questions, that would be great. But this is an extremely frustrating situation, one that New York City cannot handle, or that you're doing your best to handle it. Thank you very much.
I can respond to questions one and three regarding individuals leaving the system. I defer to my colleagues at Owasso. Regarding question one, how do people prove who they are? I would defer to DSS, the Department of Social Services oversees ID NYC. Their website has a list of the documents that can make someone eligible for ID NYC. And I can say that DSS works in collaboration with other city agencies, including NYPD, to confirm that the documents are valid.
I know you do try, I don't mean to interrupt you, I know you do try, but the fact remains is that there are so many people roaming this city right now, thousands and thousands, who are not ID'd properly, who are committing crimes that are heinous, and yet, we cannot process them in any way, shape, or form, because we don't know who they are or where they come from. So when it gets down to it, it's just one big, it's false, it's all false. The few that do want, and I'm going to tell you, I ran two small businesses, and these people were sponsored by my sister to become American citizens. It took years, but they got their sponsorship. I ran a landscaping business, day workers, they work hard, and they were, but we did not get flooded the way we are flooded right now. We just do not have, the jobs are not available, the, the people are plentiful, some want to work very, very, very hard. I wish we could help more than we can, but the reality of this whole thing is that we simply cannot. And this is, this is proof. You heard Gail, you heard, you heard Chairman Felice, we've, we've listened to everybody here, and all we're hearing is just the frustration that we're not doing enough. We're not doing enough because we cannot do more than what we're already doing. So we could try, and we are, but I just don't see an easy way out of this, I really don't. Thank you.
Regarding question three, related to the I-765 backlog, the Office of Immigrant Affairs has engaged with the federal government in collaboration with other cities, submitted letters and requests to expedite the production of work authorization. And the city, through Owasso and the Asylum Application Help Center and our other programs, worked tirelessly to help people apply for work authorization and have in high numbers. Pass to my colleagues at Owasso regarding individuals leaving the system.
Thank you. I would like to just push back on the assertion that New York City has never before seen a surge like this one. In the 1890s, in that one decade, we had 600,000 immigrants come through the city just from Italy, and in the following decade, that number rose to a million. And I could only imagine, you know-
You cannot compare the Industrial Revolution of the 1890s and the early turn of the century to 2024. New York City needed to be built back then, and you cannot in any way, shape, or form compare that time to this time. compare that time to this time. Totally different apples and oranges. Please don't try to push that on the citizens of the city of New York because they won't buy it the same way I don't buy it. You could try, but it won't work.
To answer question two, Councilmember Palladino, while individuals are within our care, obviously, we can track them. Because I know that number.
You just happen to know Italians, 600,000. Really? Show me the list of the 600,000 Italians. That was mixed European. That was Italian, that was Irish, that was German.
I'm happy to follow up with you on that.
Please, don't go there, because I could take offense to that. Everybody seems to take offense to when you single out a certain nationality. So, as an Italian, I think I'll take offense to that, and you should never have said that, ever.
To your second question, once individuals are out of care, we can't track them, obviously. They may be moving to shelter elsewhere outside of care. They may be coming back into shelter at a later time. However, we do have the ability to share information about individuals who have applied for EADs. I think several of my colleagues have referred to that previously, and an example of that would be the collaboration between New York State Department of Labor and SBS.
So, thank you. Thank you so much. So, I'd like to know, thank you for inserting some historical facts into the dialogue here. How many change-of-adresses applications have been filed through the Asylum Application Help Center?
We filed 6,588.
6,580? And do you know how many applicants are using the Red Cross location as their address?
I don't, but we'll get back to you on that number.
And you mentioned earlier that perhaps that mail is being maintained indefinitely. Is it at all the centers or just at the-
It's at all the shelters currently, if it's federal mail. So, not all mail, but federal mail. So, if it would be in the AD, it would be maintained.
And in terms of, if an individual has filed an application with the Help Center while they were living in the shelters but are now- but are not now living in the shelter, can they still access services at the Help Center?
That's a great question, yes. If they're a former client, and especially if we applied asylum for them, and now six months later, they want work authorization, we'll actually proactively call them to try to get them into appointment. We call our previous list at least three times, and then if they have a question or a rejection or a request for more information from the federal government, they can come in and we'll see that application through.
So, any touch point with the system will allow you access to follow back up?
You can come- yeah, exactly.
Okay. Now, in terms of, so the administration has prioritized, obviously, asylum and TPS and corresponding work authorization applications through the Help Center. But asylum, as we know, is enormously complicated to apply for and defend, and requires a delay to apply for work authorization. So, individuals are not in shelters after the 30, 60 days would become ineligible for Help Center services, and the number of new arrivals may be better suited for a different immigration status that may provide more streamlined work authorization status. So, additionally, sorry, this is building context here. Additionally, because the TPS must be reapplied for, there needs to be consideration of what services are available to new arrivals closer to their future renewal dates, especially if TPS recipients have integrated themselves into New York City and its local economy. So, here's the question. So, are there any plans to direct funding away from the Help Center towards immigration service providers to address these complexities and the fact that these applications take a very, very long time and people need full representation, not a quick application, to better likely provide access to work authorization? What are the plans to address this full pipeline?
Okay, so I'll take that in parts. The Asylum Application Help Center is definitely an emergency operation that complements but does not replace all the amazing work that has been done, is done, will be done by the CBO community. And, you know, I am very proud of the work we do, but I'll be the first to say that nothing really can replace full representation. But what we're doing is alleviating a crisis situation.
But when are we going to move out of this emergency position, right? This is part of our reality. Migration will be happening to this amazing city that immigrants from all over have built. When are we moving out of this posture and actually building the full representation pipeline that we're going to need to support the investment of these applicants?
I understand, and I'll get to that and also defer to my Moia colleagues. But in terms of the funding for the AHC and for the emergency operation that we are, we get funded by the state government, and we know that we got funding for six months. We're working on an extension. But I think part of the answer is, we don't always know how long a crisis can last. You know, I've worked previously in the COVID crisis, and in the middle of that, we didn't know how long we'd be there as well. I agree with you that ultimately, we have to make sure that we support our CBO community and legal service providers that have been doing this work. And I'd like to defer to Moia and my colleagues there on their work there.
I'll just add that the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network is $5 million in annual funding for nonprofit legal service providers, and they've done a significant amount of work last year and continue to, to provide individuals with application assistance and also trainings and capacity building. One of our primary focuses at Moia is building the professional capacity of the field. There currently are not a sufficient number of immigration paralegals or attorneys, especially those working in nonprofits, to be able to handle the broader need. And so, under the direction of Commissioner Castro and in collaboration with our contracted and non-contracted partners, we continue to focus on that. And it also will be a primary focus of the upcoming requests for proposals that we have mentioned in previous hearings regarding the Moia Immigration Legal Support Centers.
Thank you. But what I'm not hearing is that we are increasing both the contract terms, right? We're losing attorneys because we are not paying them what they need to be paid for in order to stay in the system. So, I hope that new RFP is going to expand both the cost for legal services providers to adequately fund them, but also expand to address the need, because what we see is we don't have enough attorneys in the field to be able to address certainly, or even meet the need of the asylum applications that we have already invested in beginning. So, just for the record from OASO, you mentioned $30 million. Is that the investment that was made for this fiscal year for the Help Centers? I just want to be clear about what you were saying.
That's for this past fiscal year, and the state-
For fiscal '24?
Yes, and the state has indicated that they will continue funding into the new year, and we're excited to work with them on that.
At the same level?
We're still working through the details there, but I think the interest is to maintain our productivity at the same level because we have been very-
And it would be specifically for the Help Centers?
That is my understanding.
Okay. And the whole 30 million has been just for the Center?
The previous 30 million has been for the Asylum Application Help Center.
Got it. Got it. I guess I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Haney for your questions.
Thank you so much, Chairs Avilas and Feliz, and thank you all for being here and the work that you do. I've been grateful to learn about SBS's just extraordinary, commendable work to pair asylum seekers with good jobs and that there's an infrastructure. But of course, I'm disappointed to learn that you're doing this with no new funding. This is all funding that you're piecing together from existing monies, and, you know, I can't help but think what could be possible if there was investments going to the agencies to adequately support ESL programs and the workforce programming that you all are working on. And also, just for the record, I wanted to distance myself from the comments of my Queens Gratefully, that is a minority in this city council, and I share this out loud because I want to be respectful of the guests who are here, who will be testifying, who are impacted by what we're witnessing right now in this city, and I didn't want that to just go unnoticed. I'd like to, oh, and I just one more comment on Moia. Thank you so much for your partnership on the Workers' Bill of Rights. So grateful for the workshops that are underway right now to ensure that our communities are informed about the protections that are here irrespective of their immigration status. And New York City is certainly going to continue to be a destination because of the protections that we've been able to feel together with the administration and the city council. Could you share the administration's position on Intro 216?
Is this the ID NYC?
Yes, this is my legislation.
So, the Department of Social Services couldn't be here, and we don't have a position to chair, unfortunately, Councilmember. I know that they had another hearing, but I think they are available to discuss it at a later point. It was just a matter of not having capacity to send somebody to this hearing.
Yeah, that's pretty disappointing, and of course, this isn't directed to any one of you. This is the second day in a row that the administration has failed to send an adequate representative to share testimony about a bill that I have getting heard. And that obviously makes collaboration with the administration really, really difficult for this council. I mean, we can't move on legislation if the administration isn't here on the record to speak on the challenges or the positives of a particular legislation that would ease- this bill in particular would ease the process for ID NYC. So, I'm disappointed, but I'm going to ask a few questions about the, one, for Moia workshops, what are you hearing, what are you learning from these sessions about what workers are experiencing? And then, two, could you, for SBS, can you share what you all are hearing in terms of work placements? I'm particularly concerned about women who are asylum seeker women who, without the promise of Promise NYC, which the city council is fighting 25 million, for a $25 million investment for FY '25, without it, we're leaving out an entirety of people who need to get to work in order to be able to leave the shelter system. And so, I don't want to forget women. I want to understand just the data on women and placement to work, and what more could be done to really support women in particular.
So, for the Bill of Rights, as you know, the work is, has, is going to be concluding on or before July 1st, 2024, so we're still working through some of it. So, I just want to share some of the top issues and things that we've done so far. As of today, the Bill of Rights has been updated and disseminated into link NYC kiosks through social media platforms. Commissioner Castro and Commissioner Vaughn, I think, is the right name here, also hosted an ethnic and media roundtable to get the information out. I have nothing to report right now regarding the workshops because that's ongoing, but I'm happy to circle back with you post-hearing.
Great. I'd love to learn about just what you're hearing directly.
And in terms of what we're hearing about barriers to employment, the most prominent has been English as a second language access. You know, I mentioned an anecdotal observation of the attendance of mothers with young children at our hiring events. However, we, in our, in the stories that are beginning to come back to our centers, we are seeing job seekers who are, you know, are women and mothers having success in job placements with our support. One example is a woman who attended a hiring event that we held in March 2024. She was subsequently hired by Collins Building Services as a cleaner with a wage of $19.10 per hour and has also accepted a part-time food prep position as a dishwasher, making $22.10 per hour. There's a Haitian immigrant who recently was referred to an ESL course through SUNY, through the Queens EOC program, and we're following up once she's completed that ESL program to explore job opportunities. So, I just don't have data right now on the incidence of referrals for childcare-specific needs, but again, we would attempt to meet that need for services through our Community Partners Program.
Could I just ask one more question? Can you speak on how much funding right now is going towards ESL programs?
I can speak to what Moia has, because I know that our, I think, one of the agencies that's not here, well, wasn't quite, is DYCD, who oversees a lot of the adult literacy funding. But what Moia has developed, I'm just trying to find my page here, is the English Learning Centers and Support Centers. We have 85 English learning and support centers for immigrant New Yorkers across the city. This is using our We Speak curriculum that we're now sharing with 10 CBOs and 75, 75-plus city libraries across the city. I think that number's 1 million, if I'm not mistaken.
And in those ESL classes, is there a component of how to apply for ID NYC?
So, there's several components. I don't have the full list, but there's three seasons to the curriculum, and the goal of this program was really to help people, just anyone who's a non-English speaker, navigate city resources. Included, I can say, I just don't have the full list in front of me, is resources to schools, transportation, emergency preparation in season one. Season two, career preparation, immigration, legal help, and pre-K resources. And season three, health and tenant rights. I think there might be an episode, but I just can't say it.
Yeah, I think that would be imperative. And also, are you able to respond to anything about ID NYC this afternoon?
Unfortunately, I can't speak to anything. If you want extra questions, Councilmember?
Are you-
I'll try, I don't-
Okay, great.
But if I have to defer-
Yeah, no, I want to understand, you know, SBS's role, Moia's role, OASO's role in ensuring that folks are connected to ID NYC. I'm assuming that there's an inter-agency meeting that happens at, you know, weekly or biweekly, and there, you know, there has to be some infrastructure and talk about the ID NYC process and the challenges of that.
So, I can say, can't speak specifics because I'm not a part of the meeting, but there is an inter-agency meeting that happens with ID NYC and several other agencies included, including Moia. Again, I'm not a part of those meetings, so I can't speak to that and like what's discussed. But I know that an effort has been made to streamline processes and to work through, you know, just better systems. On the Moias and our deputy commissioner and assistant commissioner, Alita Efford, in helping with outreach. I don't have specific numbers for you here now.
So, Moia does some outreach?
We do some, we help with, you know, that arm is specifically dedicated to just general outreach to the immigrant community, and we have touch points that touch on ID NYC. We also play a role depending on, as issues arise in pre-vetting and supporting ID NYC in pre-vetting documents, primarily with languages that we have in-house. But again, I can't offer more than that, just sort of a broad picture of some of the work that Moia is working with ID NYC on.
Understood. We will submit written questions to DSS. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shoung?
Thank you, Chair. And also, I have some questions. I'm the first Chinese-American city council from Brooklyn, and I am a immigrant, like a lot of people here. And I don't like people saying some word called Chinese. That's not respectful, first of all. As a city agency, you shouldn't use that word. That's first. And then also, last year, there are 37,000 Chinese migrants crossed US-Mexican border to- two majority of them come to New York City. And also, I want to know, do you guys know how many Chinese immigrants in New York City? Asylum seeker, I mean.
We'll have to circle back on that number.
Okay, I have the data, 24%. Okay, that's the data, 24%. And also, do you know where they go?
If I would say neighborhoods, I would say Sunset Park is probably a big one. Also, Queens, I'm flushing Queens would be the, and the reason why I'm responding on Sunset Park, during our time at Moya or during one of the visits, Commissioner Castro has met with community groups in Sunset Park, PCR, parent-child relations in particular, who has sort of discussed that, but that would be anecdotal.
That's the only organization you guys work with?
There's more, I just don't have the full list. That's the only one that I joined.
Okay, I'd like to have the full list. And also, right now, this year, 10 times more Chinese-American asylum seeker came to New York City. And I want to know, when you guys doing outreach, how much resource is used to Chinese-American community?
So I do want to clarify, council member, an earlier comment that was made, that was not the city, that was the state's legislation that refers to that language in that way, and I agree with you that it is disrespectful within the city. And at the Asylum Seeker Help Center, we break down at least five different languages that are spoken in China. So I apologize for any miscommunication there.
For writing only one, one language, just let you know, I speak Chinese fluent, I read and write.
Understood. I will pass it on to my colleague, Masha, but I do believe that across many different languages, for people who give their asylum, their country of origin is China, we have served them at the asylum application help center.
Yes, thank you, Grace. And I'll be able to look back with you the actual numbers of how many we've served, so you can see that number as well. I don't have it handy, but I'll make sure to follow up after this meeting.
And the how many, how do you guys do outreach to Chinese community?
So asylum seekers can get appointments through shelter.
They have one, less than 1% in the shelter.
So the asylum application help center, just this one program, we serve clients in shelter. That is the demographic that we are funded for.
So how do you reach out to the people not living in the shelter?
So I would defer to my Moya colleagues, but for this specific program that OASO runs, the asylum application help center, we serve folks in shelter.
So only in the shelter? You guys never do the outreach outside the shelter? 24% Chinese migrants in the city, but less than 1% Chinese asylum seeker live in the shelter. So that means you guys forget that 23%. Is that correct?
I would say that we are, given how many individuals in the city would want asylum seeker support for the applications, for asylum applications, work authorization, TPS, we're currently funded to serve those in shelter. And that's the population we've been focused on for that specific effort.
So you guys not going to increase outreach, the other part?
Well, I would, this is where I would want to defer to our Moya colleagues, because there are programs that are not necessarily directed towards folks in shelter that would cover greater swaths of the population as well.
Moya works with Chinese-American Planning Council, or CA PC.
CPC?
Mm-hmm. To, with the Action NYC Program. So they're essentially a navigation site for immigration legal consultations and also navigation to other city resources. I'll pass to my colleague, Lorena.
Yeah, I just wanted to add three, well, Tom just mentioned CPC. We've also met with AAF, which is the bigger umbrella, PCR. I don't have the numbers with me, but there have been intentional outreach touchpoints through our external affairs team to target heavily dense communities that reflect some of the new arrivals are coming. I just don't have that data with me. The information that's provided there is the information that's provided to, with all our sort of outreach events, which include providing information on how to enroll to IDNYC, providing information on how to access legal services, and also information regarding your rights as a migrant in the city of New York, just to name a few. It's not the extensive list, but it's some of the top three. But I can circle back regarding the organizations and the specific targeted outreach events in those communities as well.
And did you guys have any study done on this issue, to how to reach out to Chinese-American community?
I can't say that we have a study now, but I could say that internally, we have been trying to get a sense of some of the top issues via our external affairs arm that this community is facing, primarily because of what you pointed out. And what we know is that they're not staying in shelter, they're remaining outside of it. So figuring out how to best do outreach and things like that.
And also, do you guys reach out to those Chinese township organizations? It's not nonprofit. Some maybe file that as nonprofit. Do you guys do outreach to them?
The only, that I'm aware of, we do have ties with local leaders and community-based organizations. If there's anything outside of that or anything that you might recommend, council member, we're happy to take it back. I don't, I don't have the extensive list.
Do you guys have other resources, apps, like WhatsApp, WeChat, this type of outreach groups?
Yeah, our external affairs team also has a lead liaison with the Chinese community, Lydia, as well as two Chinese-speaking language access specialists. We can get back to you regarding more information.
Because I never see any. I am a immigrant, I know how hard the process is, and I can, I have to say, you guys are brave to come here, and I want to help. But in Chinese-American community, I did not see any resources. Very few nonprofits has the resources. And I use my own discretion and funding for all the program, but I only have very limited resource. And if Moya doesn't step up, help Chinese-American community, that's 24%, and it's growing, and that's not fair for Chinese-American community.
We'll take that back to our external affairs team immediately.
And also, you guys should reach out to every single different group. They have their own way to communicate. Some group use WhatsApp, some group use WeChat. They have different ways, but I did not see those platforms.
Yeah, if I may, council member, so one of the specialists that Tom mentioned does have a WeChat channel with about 10,000 followers, which you disseminate.
Then let's, then I, my follower is more than Moya.
All right, thank you, council member.
And I have one more question. And also, SBS said you reach out to 9,000 asylum seekers. I want to know how many Chinese speaking there? What's the percentage?
It's a small percentage of asylum seekers that we've reached out to, but we're happy to get back to you about the proportion served across our network. I do want to point out that we have a Workforce One center located in Flushing, so data from that center may be particularly relevant to this question. We also manage an Asian-American Small Business Task Force, through which we're working with, I believe, Asian-American Federation, Chinatown Mayan Power, to try and get out information about our services. So I'm happy to circle back with additional details, but we have translated our palm cards into simplified Chinese and traditional Chinese, as well as our intake materials, our intake forms for Workforce One, into those languages as well. So we would love to partner on getting that out even more broadly.
Thank you. And also, I want to know how many people speak Chinese in Moya to do reach out, outreach? How many? And what's the percentage?
We have one primary liaison with the Chinese community and two language specialists that support them.
That's only one?
All Chinese speakers.
We have Flushing, we have Brooklyn, we have Queens, everywhere. Probably one is not enough. I want to see the grow there. Thank you.
We'll be in touch following the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Shuang. So we are, we're, I'd like to just go back quickly to OASO. So could you talk to me about what workforce diversion and exit strategies means as a title?
So the mayor recognizes that workforce development for our asylum seekers is not just about what jobs can we get new New Yorkers into today, right now? It's also about what jobs are going to be available and needed in this country in the near future, and how can we prepare folks for that? So diversion, we might think about as encouraging folks to reach out to family members, to friends, et cetera, and find alternative pathways that are not directly through our shelter sites here in New York. But we talk about exit strategies. It's really everything that supports ultimately finding employment and full-time employment, a lot of what we've been talking about today. So to me and to my colleagues, exit strategies are ESL. Exit strategies are financial literacy programs, they are workforce training programs, because we really want our individuals to be as prepared as possible, to echo Chair Felice, when that EAD comes back, whenever it is, that's a piece that we don't have control over, but what we do have the ability to do is help to prepare people while they're in our care.
So in terms of, how long has this role existed in OASO?
Nine weeks.
So my next question is, does it make any sense, because we have no metrics around what even this means? Is there, is there success metrics that you're working under?
Yes, we have metrics that we are working towards, although many of the projects and programs that we envision are still in the planning stages, and I've mentioned a few of them today. I will note that we now have two weekly standing inter-agency meetings attended by the folks at this table, in addition to numerous other city agencies, including DHS, H&amp;H, Talent, DCAS. One is devoted to identifying formal economy full-time jobs, the other is devoted to workforce development, and many of the initiatives that I've mentioned here today are a result of those collaborations. So I would say one metric is how many weekly inter-agency meetings are we having, and that's numbers up to two. In the future, I would like to also include the number of asylum seekers in CARE who are attending ESL classes, as well as the number of asylum seekers in our CARE who are attending workforce development certification programs, but as of yet, we're still working to build those out.
Again, I'm still mystified with this office and its overlap with Moya. I don't understand the distinctions between, the mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs should be effectively coordinating inter-agency efforts, and yet we've created a whole new agency who is also doing that. I'm still a little mystified by, by these overlaps. In terms of, in terms of ESL and workforce, without additional funding to support these programs, I'm not, I'm not understanding what we are doing here. Are we just telling people work, produce more, serve more people, without any resources to actually address the issues?
So to my understanding, there have been some limited pilots of ESL classes led by DYCD in some sites, and we can follow up with more information about that. Beyond that, we are looking for additional funding. So, for example, right now, there is some regional EDC grants that are open at the state level. They are capital-focused, but one of the things you can be eligible is space, and so if we can potentially find space to have ESL classes, that's a step in the right direction. But it is a challenge to provide what is needed in terms of ESL to this population with the current funding.
So in terms of your engagement with workforce development providers that you're meeting with, what, what is the engagement?
Can you clarify what you mean by workforce development providers?
Yeah, I guess, well, maybe, maybe I need to take a quick setback. Are you, are you meeting with workforce development providers across the city? And if so, who are they?
So within the city, workforce development is primarily in the provision of SBS, and so I would pass that question back to them.
So let me go back to you, because you did mention workforce as a metric. If you're not engaging with workforce, how is that a metric for your success?
So when we're talking about workforce development, we're looking not just within the city agencies, but also toward larger industry trends. So we are having conversations with Talent about some of the site safety opportunities. I know we've discussed that today, but there are more languages that we could go into. And also, another one of our potential applications that we're working on for RADC would be a green jobs training center and/or a skilled construction training center, so that we could have more folks getting into those roles during the time that they are in CARE.
And, and why is that, why is OASO the right place for this work?
I will leave the question open for my colleagues at Moya to say more, but my understanding is that the mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs is responsible for addressing the needs and concerns of all immigrants across New York City, not all of whom are asylum seekers who are actively in our care. And so I believe that OASO's role is to provide a laser focus on those individuals, those 65,000 people we've been talking about, who live in one of the sites which is managed by OASO. But Moya, I defer to you to expand.
I mean, I'll say that at the, as the role became what it is now, through conversations, I think it's because they have access to the folks in CARE, more direct access than, that I think anybody else here does, and I think that was part of it. It's attached to some of the operational work that OASO has been leading.
So in terms of, as, do edsec strategies include facilitating access to IDNYC?
We can follow up with you on that. I don't have information on that currently.
And I guess, okay, I'd love to get some more information. And in terms of what information has been provided to newly arriving folks on the uses of IDNYC?
I can speak to the quantity of Moya's outreach now and get back to you on the actual materials that are provided. So from January 3rd through May 12th of this year, the Moya outreach team assisted 10,000 New Yorkers in preparing their documents for and submitting their IDNYC application. An additional 2018 from May 13th to present, so about 12,000 to 13,000 total for this year. And I can get back to you on what, what materials were submitted, but essentially, the document review is part of an educational process about the use of the ID as well and its purpose.
Thank you. And in terms of, I guess, back to the exit strategy, and we're hearing a lot about intensive case management, can you give us some clear data around what is happening upon exit? Where are people going? Where are they staying? What is happening?
So there has been an intensive case management program launched at 18 of the sites managed by H&amp;H. We are not H&amp;H, and so we are also waiting for them to release their data, but we're happy to follow up with you when we have that information.
Okay. I think, I think that wraps up my question. I guess just one observation here is, you know, what we're seeing is like this, we need every city agency to come to a hearing to get a coherent picture of what is happening. What we get is like a quarter of a picture, because that's a quarter of only what you do, or Moya does, or SBS does, and it's exceedingly frustrating, because what we're seeing is all the disconnects, and yet we cannot get a coherent picture from this administration. If we want to provide ESL courses, if we want to ensure that there is literacy, which is a foundational element to succeed here, we have to fund these programs, yet they are being defunded. There are new RFPs happening with DYCD, which is reducing the amount of actual providers, reducing the amount of people that can be reached. This administration is so. This administration is so frustrating that it does not want to, it says it's trying to meet the need, yet defunding the very services that we need. It's so, so frustrating. So I know I'm preaching to the choir. I know you share the frustration. I know you're trying your best to do your best with the limited resources that you have, but we can do better as a city, and it's just, what a, thank you. I don't know, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for your last thing. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate those points. Number one, first, thank you so much for all the work that all of you have done to help asylum seekers every way possible. We need to make it very clear, and we cannot forget about the fact that the city of New York has done more for these asylum seekers than a lot of jurisdictions combined, than a lot of jurisdictions combined. So that's one fact that we cannot forget about, and, you know, all of you have been leading on that, so I just want to thank you all for, for everything you've been doing on that. Not easy, still a lot of work. And I think one thing that is clear, as Chair Villas mentioned, is that all of you need financial help so that you could have more resources, so you could be able to fully fulfill the mission that you have, whether, whether it's training, connecting individuals to work, and so much more. So a few questions, and they're going to be super brief, like that we could hear from the advocates. A few questions, going back to workforce and general economic stability. How many migrants under city's care are families with children? And also, are childcare needs a standard question for workforce training? Or workforce services?
Do you mind stating, do you mind repeating what the focus of that particular, particular question was? Was council members, sorry, you were talking about referrals to services?
Yeah, so how many migrants under city's care are families with children? And also, are childcare needs a question when we're assessing at workforce centers?
Sure. On the, on the first question, I would defer to my colleagues in the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. On the second question, childcare certainly is what we look at. One of the things when we meet with clients, when they come into our Workforce One Centers, with our network of 300 community partners that we spoke on, childcare is certainly one of the needs that we look at, and in terms of what supports a family might need. So we do have in our network of community partners able to make, make, make referrals to that particular resource if it's needed. And I refer to my Office of Asylum Seeker Operations colleagues on the number of families with children in the system.
All right. And briefly, going back to the work permit process, last line of questions, I promise. You know, obviously, these families come here for one reason, for economic stability. And of course, they cannot achieve that unless they have the work permit. So what's the process for work permit? When can they apply? How, at what stage can they apply? You know, obviously, they have to, there's many different things, including TPS and having all sorts of immigration things satisfied. So when can they apply for work permit? How can they apply? And also, if we've received 200,000 migrants since the start of this migrant crisis, why have we only helped 20,000 apply for work permits?
I can take that. And so the primary ways to get work authorization that we're focusing on are, one, people that have been paroled into the country, so they need to have a very specific commensary and parole stamp, and then they're immediately eligible to apply. That's a minority of the clients we're seeing in our shelters. Two, they can get work authorization if they apply for TPS. If they're TPS eligible, then they can apply for work authorization alongside applying for temporary protective status. That's an incredibly rigid eligibility metric, so we've applied, we cleared the backlog of TPS eligible folks in our care, and we're applying anyone new that comes in, but it's, it's kind of very strict. And three, people can apply 150 days after applying for asylum. So we are trying to apply folks for asylum, so that 150 days, we can call them back and apply them for work authorization. So I shared some numbers about our productivity before, and I'm really proud of it. We apply about 100 people a day for work authorization. We could do more, but there's just not more people that are necessarily work authorization eligible. And that's where it's really important to call on the federal government to increase the countries, to, to, to increase countries for TPS, to increase the amount of folks that are getting commensary and parole, whatever it is, because we have more capacity to apply more people for work authorization. It's just that there are really strict rules about who is eligible. And Tom, I saw you reach for the mic, I think you'd like to add?
Just, just to echo, I think part of the challenge is that work authorization available through the federal government is always based on a type of status and a, and a relief category. It could be family, it could be humanitarian, but there is no pathway just to apply for work authorization by virtue of being here, which is why the city's calls for humanitarian parole, for expanding TPS, or temporary protected status have, have been frequent and strong. We need an expansion of pathways to work authorization and an expedited process.
And if we were to guess, how many migrants and asylum seekers are eligible to apply for work permits? Super rough.
Again, with the guessing.
Yeah.
I, I feel confident that of those in shelter, we have really cleared the backlog, and anyone new coming on, we are applying them for work authorization, and we are calling back all of our clients that we've applied 150 days prior, three times, to try to reach them and get them come in to do work authorization. So I feel really good that we're maxing on, maxing out the accessible currently eligible population in our shelters, and I would love to be able to do more, and I'd love for more people to be eligible. But there is not a backlog as it stands. We're applying everyone we can find as quickly as we can.
Okay, what number are we talking about in terms of how many we can find? How many are eligible?
We've applied 20,000 folks for work authorization.
Oh, so basically, more or less, we've applied, everyone who is eligible has somewhat applied.
Virtually, in our care. Yeah, in our care, we've provided virtually everyone that is eligible, and anyone new coming on, and anyone new becoming eligible. So every month, you know, we have our former clients that become newly eligible, we're contacting them, we're calling them, we're trying to see if they're still in the city, and if they are, we'll apply them for work authorization.
Okay. And one final question for SBS. So earlier, you mentioned you've served about 5,500 individuals through the workforce and the American Dreams Program, and that you haven't received one single penny since the start of the migrant crisis, in addition for, for these programs. So just curious, if we needed to serve, let's say, 15,000 asylum seekers and migrants, would the current system work for that? Would it have capacity to serve that?
I believe our current Workforce One system, with the 18 centers and the staff we have, could stretch to serve those additional clients, and it's really the advantage of having the infrastructure of space and staff, expert staff that we have. You know, I don't mean to imply that there aren't costs, like, related to serving folks. Our, our centers are open nine to five. Could extra hours be, be useful to new migrants potentially? Are there additional costs related to translation? There are, and it extends the time to serve individual job seekers, but I, I just want to emphasize that we, we are really lucky as a city to have in Workforce One what we're asking for, for the full scope of costs related to this surge, which is a federal funding source that is stable, that we can rely on to, to flex as, you know, to the extent of our ability at this time. You see an example of the flexibility of the system in responding to the Valor Site Safety Card deactivations. We were able to collaborate with the Department of Buildings to notify all of the individuals whose cards were deactivated as a result of that fraud, that they could access construction site safety training through Workforce One to replace that resource and allow them to reconnect to work. So we are appreciative of the flexibility that our, that our federal funding source gives us. We, we support the citywide ask for additional federal resources, and we'll continue to look for ways to expand our work.
All right, sounds good. Well, thank you so much for all the information, and again, just want to reiterate, very thankful, very thankful for all the work you do. Obviously, this is a crisis. We're two years in, we should have better systems by now, but still a crisis, and obviously, we need more resources so we could be able to serve the amount of people that need to be served, and also at the level that they need to be served. Also, it is clear that all of you need help in terms of resources, resources so that you could be able to serve individuals, and we need the federal government to step up. You know, so federal government, if you're listening to this hearing, we need your help. Migrants just want to work. They have come here to work, and if they're already in our city, we've welcomed them to our great city. We should also give them the opportunity to work here and contribute to our economy. We need help, and we need it now, not tomorrow, we need it now. Thank you so much, and I'll pass it back to Chair Villas.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience and the going back and forth and the time. And I just want to do a quick rapid-fire question for all of you. We've talked a lot about the supports that we have in place, we talked a lot about the infrastructure that we have. What I didn't hear is what promising approaches or programs currently exist that if we were to scale up, we would be able to really meet some needs. We, we noted at the top of the hearing, right, Denver instituted a program of six months of stable housing with work, with ESL, coupled a full wraparound service for their population. We know worker cooperatives work for, for undocumented people as, as a potential. Can you, can each of you name two specific programs that if we could just fully invest, would begin to meet this need? And you can't repeat each other's programs, you can't say what she said, but two programs that currently build off the infrastructure that we have in New York City, because we have enormous amount of expertise, and a lot of work that has gone into building support for undocumented workers. So I'd love your answers to include a significant part of the population that is unfortunately being left out right now, are people who do not have work authorization but need to work. So they are here, and they need support. We have expertise there. So tell me two or three programs that you wish we could get fully funded and scale up to address the needs that you are seeing on the ground, that you want to have an impact in. So I'll start with SBS.
I hope you'd start with me. We are doing some great work, including contextualized ESL in occupational trainings that we're delivering for immigrant New Yorkers. These programs haven't all been developed for new New Yorkers, but the integration of the training that connects them to a license, to, to be able to, you know, work to the extent that they can earn in the United States is, is really important, and then integrating ESL into those occupational training programs, I would say is an area that we can expand. One example is a program that we provide for individuals who are trained as nurses in their home countries, but perhaps have connected to work as a home health aide or, you know, an Uber driver here. We want them to be able to work in their profession, which also meets a need in our workforce for healthcare professionals. So we're connecting them with training to earn their licensure, and also to healthcare-focused ESL training within that single program. To be able to grow programs like that would be, I think, an incredible resource.
And how much money would you need to, you're getting a magic wand, how much money do we need to scale up this program? For the first year?
Can I get back to you?
No.
I honestly didn't bring the budget for our NCLEX program today, but I'm honestly happy to follow up with.
Several million, I suspect. A good start.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, we're spending, it's a, it's an efficient program in terms of how we deliver, up to 15,000 per client that we serve.
Amazing. So an infusion of several million for this program would sound incredibly beneficial.
Or other programs that, other occupational trainings that we're enlisting, that we're enrolling for, that we're delivering, to be able to include contextualized ESL in those programs.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to say our, our English language support centers, which I mentioned earlier. Again, I think the vision really there is to create a community for folks who are recent arrivals, but also long-term immigrant New Yorkers. The connection to the libraries is, is one of the examples, and again, we're learning through this pilot. The second would be, you know, the program that we're very proud of, but it's very small, which is the Immigrant Navigator Program, which is the mentor mentorship program that I mentioned. If I may, Chair, just one comment on Denver. We speak to them via our Cities for Action Network that I mentioned. They were able to learn a lot from, from New York and other cities. The, the number of people that, that they received is also much smaller.
Sure.
We clap and we commend their program, but I just wanted to mention that because, again, we're in communication and we appreciate them, but it's been innovative, but a smaller response that they have to handle.
100%. I think we all know every city is going to be smaller than New York City. That should not make us lower our standards or, you know, shoot for the floor. We should be shooting for the sky and being able to meet that. How much money would you need to expand these programs?
I mean, give me all the money, Chair, but, you know, I can't say a lot. I would say that, you know, what we have currently would be great.
So the $1 million program for, I'm going to call it the wrong thing again, how, what percentage of new arrivals do you think that program touches? Rough guess, and I know, I won't hold you to the actual number, but...
The, the current program as it is, I, I don't have, the enrollees that we have, their new arrivals, it's a small pilot, so it's just 250. However, the impact that that has on the networks that they build, I don't have that data for you, we'll have it eventually, so I can't really, maybe 500 people.
Yeah, so, so less than 1%. So doubling that program would have, have a greater impact. So we, we're aiming for doubling the program, $2 million investment on that program. Okay, how about you?
I, I second Lauren's.
I said that's cheating. I'm going to allow it.
I would say community-rooted immigration legal service programs, much like Moya Immigration Legal Support Centers and the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, where you have a combination of professional immigration legal assistance, capacity, capacity building, and community. It, it really does multiply the value of the investment and also ensures that folks are receiving a broader continuum of care that involves immigration legal but is not constrained to it.
I agree with that. Would you need 50% increase in funding for that program? 100%?
I think that the need is...
Much larger than 100%?
It's vast, but I would say, echo Lauren, and say the same amount. If, if we're able to continue and build upon current offerings, that would be...
So you want the same program with no new money?
Any resources would be welcome.
Additional resources would be, thank you.
Yes.
Owasso?
Public Schools launched a new program last month called Young Adult Bridge, which is ESL classes for 18 to 20-year-olds who intend to then transition into getting their GED. So it is a shortened program. I believe it goes through the end of this month, or maybe early July, but I think that would be a really useful opportunity if that program was able to be expanded to more of our asylum seekers in care.
How much funding does that require?
I do not know. It's a public schools program, but I could follow up.
How about a program that Owasso controls and is funding?
Owasso is not currently funding any programs, but the Asylum Seeker Help Centers.
So I love this question. For the asylum application help center, well, first of all, we're extremely grateful for our funding from the state. That is part of the reason we've been able to be successful, is they've been very generous with the funds. But one kind of programmatic improvement that I think is priceless is just the need for more immigration attorneys. I, I actually don't know if we have enough in the city, regardless of who gets the funding, regardless if I get a billion dollars, to be able to meet the need of this population. So I, I just, however many takes to magically appear immigration attorneys in the city of New York is, is what I would need, because I think that's increasing... of New York is what I would need, because I think that's increasingly the ceiling that many of our programs are facing. And I think that the current immigration workers and attorneys, whether they're pro bono or private practice or CBOs, are really tapped out, and I think we just, we just need more. So, I really want to highlight that, because there's just going to be a point where money won't cut it. But the second program, I think, you know, I mentioned earlier here, is this kind of callback centers that the Asylum Application Help Center can follow through with clients. We're already doing that, and we're going to try to do it in a way that doesn't affect our productivity but keeps us at current funding. But if that is not possible, then maybe I'll be back and maybe I'll have an estimation for you and for the state and for anyone else who wants to listen.
I appreciate you. You're the gambler of the group.
I know. I'm still here next year.
With a lot of guessing today. Thank you. Thank you for indulging the question. I think that the point of the question is that we do have an enormous amount of foundational infrastructure in New York City and expertise, and we need to continue to fund. And there is no magical number of immigration attorneys, but I will guarantee you 100%, if we fully fund legal service providers to stabilize this field and stay in public service immigration ecosystem, they will stay and we will stabilize. But what we cannot do is defund or devalue that service to the point where people have to make such hard choices and leave the field, which we are seeing all the time. There's enormous amount of work to do to attract folks across public service to stay in these jobs and to do the best work that they can by people, because that's why we're all here. So, thank you so much. I think with that, I will not continue to torture you all. But I appreciate the work you do, and I'm really looking forward to public testimony. Thank you.
Thank everybody for testifying.
So, with that, we are now going to open the hearing for public testimony. I want to remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's oversight hearing topic, preparing asylum seekers and migrants for workforce. Quiet in the chamber, please. To the administration, folks, thank you. You, oh, excuse me. Preparing asylum seekers and migrants for the workforce on the legislation being heard today, introduction 216, resolution 230, 235, and pre-considered resolution. If you have not, if you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the close of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. For in-person panelists, please come to the table when your name has been called. And now, we will call the first panel of witnesses. We'll have Magdalena Toapanta, Maria Luisa Serrano, Maria Guzman, Ligia Walpa, Sheik Ward. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correct. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and for your patience on this long hearing today.
Thank you so much. I'm going to be translating for Magdalena. And yeah, we'll start. Thank you so much, Chair, for the opportunity to testify today.
Buenas tardes, muy agradecida. Buenas tardes, muy agradecida, Consejal Alexia, Alexia Venida. Bueno, aqui vengo por mi trabajo que yo pasé. Yo vine, yo soy de Ecuador, vine emigrante y vine a coger una pisadilla en trabajo. Yo le trabajo, o sea, yo trabajaba y nunca me han pagado. De eso, agradeciendo a...
Tranquila, no se preocupen.
Ya me olvidan la proyecto social, o sea, el proyecto, agradeciendo de eso. Yo vine acá, lo puse en la denuncia por mi cuenta que yo he luchado, que yo he trabajado desde 8 hasta 12 de la noche y nunca me pagaron. Yo sacro sacrificando por mis hijos que yo tengo en Ecuador, dos hijos. Y yo sacrificando para traer. Yo trabajaba desde las 8 hasta 12 de la noche y nunca me pagaron ese dinero. Ahí hemos cogido todos sacrificios, maltratos, y pasábamos con sed y hambre, todo obligado al trabajo y nunca le pagaron. Y de eso quisiera que me ayude con el permiso de trabajo y para poder traer a mis hijos yo he luchado.
Thank you. I'm going to be translating, but thank you so much, Magdalena. I just wanted to share, actually, Magdalena's first language is Quechua, from Ecuador, and Spanish is her second language. And for those that don't know, actually, in Ecuador, our first official language is Quechua, which is our national language. So, we're proud to, as Ecuadorian myself, proud to know that Magdalena speaks my native language. So, Magdalena, wanted to say thank you, Councilmember Abilas, for the opportunity to testify. And I'm here to share a little bit of the nightmare that I've experienced here. I work with an employer that made me work from 8:00 AM to 12:00, almost midnight, doing the work, but he never paid me. And I was doing this hard work in order to, with a lot of sacrifice, hard work. Sometimes I didn't have water and I didn't even eat in order to work and being able to provide to my family. And this is a sacrifice that I made and many others made. And I'm here, I came to the Workers' Justice to actually make it, to demand protections. And also, what I'm asking is to make sure that I can also get immigration protection and immigration pathway, so I can bring my kids. And that's my dream. Yeah. And then, I'm going to pass it on to Maria Guzman, who actually worked in the same company and wanted to also speak today. So, and I'm going to be translating.
Buenas tardes. Le doy gracias a la señora Alexa Ávila por la oportunidad. Mi nombre es Maria Guzman. Soy dominicana. Vine a emigrar a este país hace un año y tres meses. Caía un trabajo y recibí mucho maltrato igual que la compañera. Y le doy gracias al proyecto de justicia laboral que me han ayudado mucho y cogido mucho valor para poner la denuncia, para que no sigan maltratando mal personas. Gracias.
Maria, my name is, thank you so much, Councilmember Abilas, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Maria Guzman. I actually come from Dominican Republic. I came a year and a half ago, and I work with a company with my colleague there, where I received mistreatment, a lot of mistreatment in that workplace. And because of the Workers' Justice Project, we were able to demand and being able to fight for justice in that workplace. And then, I will end with Maria Serrano. Maria Luisa Serrano.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Luisa Serrano. Soy de México. Yo emigré a los Estados Unidos por mejores oportunidades, pero cuando yo llegué aquí, este, sin documentos, este, es muy difícil conseguir trabajo sin documentos, y aún más es difícil sin tener un buen entrenamiento. Hace un año, yo llegué al proyecto de justicia laboral. Ahí, este, me ofrecieron un entrenamiento de OSHA, también SST, también de liderazgo y de limpieza. Me ha ayudado mucho porque estamos más organizados trabajando y hacemos, hacer valer nuestro trabajo allá afuera. Y gracias, este, por estas oportunidades y por estos entrenamientos que nos dan para hacer mejor nuestro trabajo allá afuera. Gracias.
So, my name is Maria Luisa Serrano, and I came here looking for better opportunities. And as somebody, you know, somebody without work authorization and without training, it's really hard to find jobs. And I was lucky, because I was able to get OSHA training, the SST's leadership training, and now I am, I'm able to organize myself and organize to make sure that I can get not only work opportunities, but we get a better treatment as well. And these opportunities, I was able to get it through Workers' Justice Project, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for these opportunities and this training that is available to us. Thank you, Maria. And we didn't want to make it long, but as you can see behind me, there is many other women, and mostly women, who wanted to speak. Actually, one of them wanted me to share that, and she said, ask, as a council member, and ask them, what about us? What about those that cross, that came here and didn't really interact with the agencies to get all that support? What about us that are not able to apply for asylum seekers, asylum-seeking permits, because we didn't cross the border, but we found other means to get here? She also said, what about us? About making sure not only we get work authorization, but we also get job opportunities. And another woman was like, what about us? Many of the women who navigate job seeking without access to childcare. And these are the women who will ask you again and again, what about us? Today, it was shared powerful testimonies about who are the communities, that the agencies that we actually partner, and our partner is SBS, who we're grateful to receive a grant to provide construction site safety trainings. And also, we're super grateful for New York City Council, who are, have been supporting the Day Labor Workforce Initiative, which are our main source of investment that Workers' Justice relied on to do what we have to do. And a little bit about what we do. Something that we do is, we are a workers' rights organization that combines workers' rights organizing with workforce development. That's our recipe. If we really aim as a community to create good living wage jobs for immigrant communities, for newly arrived immigrants, we just don't need, it's not only workforce development, it's not only work authorization. We need to make sure that every job that exists, and many of the jobs that we know immigrant communities will navigate, are jobs that lack protections, are jobs that are unregulated, are jobs that many often are not even considered, where these employers are not even considered workers as workers, but are independent contractors. We want to see more commitment from city council to make sure that we invest in workforce development, in workers' rights protections, and making sure we find other pathways to provide opportunities for workers to get worker authorization, especially through the program that you highlighted today, which is the DALE program, which is a program that continues to be not known by many communities nor by immigrant agencies. We ourselves struggle to get our first deferred action and a letter of interest for 40 workers to apply for deferred action. The struggle is, it's real, and it's mostly impacting not just newly arrived immigrants in communities, but particularly women, who'd have a unique set of struggles navigating the workforce development programs, navigating how to live and survive with dignity in the city of New York.
Thank you. I'm going to return to you for some specific questions, but I want to hear the testimony of the rest of the panelists. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the city. Can you not hear me? Okay. Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Sheik Ward Kid, and I am a nursing home worker and a member political organizer at 1199 SEIU. I would just like to give a warm thank you to everyone for allowing me the opportunity to speak here today. I have a speech, but just listening to these women here really brought back so much memories of when I was like them, because I remember when I did not have the opportunity to work in this country. And for me, it was very depressing. And if I could go back by listening to them, I remember once I had the opportunity where my husband was the only person in this country I could depend on for support, for money to buy food and to do anything. I was not used to depending on anyone. I've always been independent in my country, in Jamaica, I'm from Jamaica. I've been independent since I was 18. But I came here for a better opportunity, and I thought it was going to be easy, but when I came here, it was very, very hard for me. And even though I was lucky enough to have a husband that I could depend on, that was supporting me, it was still hard. I literally, at one point, I said, you know what? I don't want to be dependent on a man anymore, and I got a job. I started out as an HHA working for $75 for 24 hours. 24 hours. And I had no choice, because you know what? I did not have any document in this country. And with the support of my husband, who helped me, I became documented and I started working into the nursing field. I started as an HHA, then I become, became recreation, a recreation staff. I started working into recreation, where I was making people's life in America, I was making people happy. I was doing stuff, I'm helping all people. And I've listened here today, and I've heard a couple people say that this state doesn't have any room for some people, because there is no job. And I work in nursing home, and I'm there helping CNAs. I'm helping nurses, because we're short-staffed. We're overworked and we're understaffed. And thank God for 1199 was being our pillow that is helping us to fight for staffing, which is actually helping us. So, I believe that if this city will help a lot of these people who are in need, they can help us. We can help families to be better. It's, there's so much opportunities out there for people, and America is for all. It's one people. And that's why people come here. People are not going to go anywhere where there's no opportunity, where there's no love. They are here in America because they think that this country is the best. They need help. And I'm just urging, because as somebody who is here, I've taken myself from nothing, and I'm here helping in the community. There's a lot of people that are right here can help others who are coming up. 1199 is a very strong union, and it has been helping us. There is a lot of stuff that 1199 does, where in the educational program, where they're helping people. They're helping me right now. I'm only a week away from becoming an American citizen, citizens, sorry, because of 1199. They're assisting us, there are programs that can help these people in nursing homes. We have family in hospitals. We have family in hospitals. We have family in nursing homes. We have family all walks in healthcare. And if we could help these people who are sitting down in these shelters to get up and go out there and work and become the next nurses, the next CNAs that are going to help our family, because all of us has to go to the hospital. We can't run from it. Sickness is something that we can't help. And I am an immigrant and I'm proud to say that I'm helping a lot of Americans to become healthy, to be happy. And I'm speaking for these people today. They need help and we're asking you kindly. This is not a joke. They need help. I know what it feels like and I wish you guys the best. I wish you guys the best and I'm saying this emotionally. I'm not in that situation anymore, but I know what it feels like.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
That was beautifully said. Well, I want to start off by saying thank you to Chairwoman of the Immigration Committee, Councilmember Alexa Aviles, and to the rest of the council members for allowing La Colmena to testify today. My name is Xenia Mata. I am the Executive Director of La Colmena. And even though La Colmena is known for providing construction training through OSHA and SST, we provide much more. We provide flaggers, scaffolding, carpentry, childcare, hospitality training, landscaping and cleaning training. Furthermore, we support immigrant workers in creating resumes, providing mock job interviews and providing digital training as workers are now getting paid through Venmo and Cash App. However, it's not only the hands-on training that we provide, but as well, conduct training on how to prevent wage theft and what are your rights as an immigrant worker. Plus, provide English classes tailored for immigrant workers to be able to communicate with their employers. Through all of this, we have been able to reach a total of 10,000 immigrants this year alone, which includes asylum seekers. Additionally, we have successfully dispatched over 1,000 immigrant workers to job sites. This work is not easy and it does take a lot of effort. Because not only do we provide workforce development, but we provide it in a way that they feel at home. This is very personal to me because my father was a day laborer and my mother was a domestic worker. And every person at La Colmena, every employee at La Colmena has their own immigrant story on why they do this work. And through this work, everyone that comes to La Colmena feels at home and they feel heard. And we understand the importance of childcare. And this is why I wanted to emphasize that going even further, the work that we provide is providing childcare support through the Promise NYC. As you have heard in this hearing, the work that La Colmena does is crucial. Therefore, we urge for our FY25 ask to be fully supported in order to continue doing this work. And I truly want to thank you for continuing supporting us and for not forgetting Stein Island. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, and I'll start with you. And we have heard today from Moya and you guys have done exceptional work under exceptional duress. Tell me, if you can, for the record really quickly, and I know they're telling me I need to speed through, but tell me for the record, number one, has your funding increased to compensate for the amount of work that you're actually doing?
No, it has not increased. The work that we do is very important, as I emphasize, the amount of people that we have seen. This year alone is 10,000. We've been seeing an increase of 2,000 people per year. So last year was 8,000 people that we saw. The year before that is 6,000. So in order for us to continue doing the work, the additional funding does need to be provided. Because we do, as we've seen a 2,000 increase each year, we are foreseeing seeing about 12,000 or so this year, this FY25 alone. So this is why we are urging for our FY25 ask to be fully supported.
Yeah, and I guess in terms of, you have been working in immigrant communities, I guess since the inception, La Colmena's inception. You have best practices. You know what it takes to integrate folks, to support them, to build communities so that when they land in a workplace, they are supported and empowered. What can the city specifically do to build on these successes that we have seen you do throughout the decades?
Well, organizations like La Colmena and organizations that are part of the Day Labor Coalition or the Domestic Worker Coalition, we have the infrastructure to be able to communicate with the community. As I said, like we all have like our own immigrant story. But this work has been conducted like even years before because immigrants coming to New York City is not nothing new, right? It's been happening. So each organization that forms part, like I said, the Day Labor Coalition, the Domestic Worker Coalition, but even other coalitions, they have the infrastructure. One organization cannot do this alone. And we're, as La Colmena, we are very open to saying we're really good at workforce development. But when it comes to ESL classes, there's other organizations that do better work when it comes to job interviews. There's other maybe organizations that do better work that we do. I guess what I'm trying to say and finish is that it requires not just for organizations like La Colmena to be sitting at the table, but many other organizations are well-equipped in order to provide this work. Because this work cannot be done alone, even by one organization.
Thank you for that. And I want to shift over to Worker Justice Project. Can you tell us about your, you seem to have been the only successful organization to use DALE in maybe New York City, maybe New York State. Can you tell us a little bit for the record how this process has gone and also what you would recommend the city really take into account and implement in order to ensure using this tool effectively?
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for, I think, bringing this conversation that not many agencies in, I think, the city of New York and the state of New York is not having. We're talking a lot about how we can guarantee a pathway for workers to have some immigration protection. And DALE is one alternative that has existed for more than a year. It's going to be two years now. And what that means is that any worker who has experienced any type of worker violation, from wage theft, discrimination, could potentially apply for deferred action, which is some sort of form of DACA for immigrant workers. But in order to do that, the federal government gives the discretion to the agencies, to any labor agency, whether it's federal, a state and city, to offer a statement of interest. A worker can only apply for this relief if the agency has given them a letter of interest or a letter of support, supporting the worker's application. Getting this letter of interest has been a journey and a challenge for Workers Justice. One of the cases that we have been organizing is actually Tabaquera, Trabajadoras Tabaqueras, or women who worked in a sweatshop that were producing tabacos. I don't know if there was a big story that came up in the city news talking about the workers who worked at a hot head grava. This was an emergency case. One of the biggest challenges is not just making sure city agencies know about the program, but also making sure city agencies can expedite and prioritize in extreme cases. Some of the workers that were here speaking, they were experiencing not only exploitation. There were being threats, their lives, where their own livelihood was put at threat. Some of them had been experienced violence, workplace violence, and some of them were even threatened with deportation. On multiple occasions, even though we highlighted the urgency of offering this statement of interest so more workers can come forward without fear, it took almost three months to get him in a statement of interest. And that just speaks about the fact that city agencies need to start prioritizing that every worker who comes through a city's agency door should be automatically educated and informed that this is an immigration relief that they're granted and that the agency is willing to offer a statement of interest if that person is fearing deportation or his immigration status is potentially creating fear of him participating in a labor investigation. We want to see, I think, what you asked, what we can do. One is making sure every agency at every level understands what deferred action is and how they can start prioritizing and informing right at the moment they receive the case. The second, not many lawyers know about how to apply deferred action, right? We did our first clinic. We had to do it with volunteer lawyers that many of them did not know, so we had to like bring experts into it. And the second one is how we can build a strong organizing campaign because I can tell you, many of the workers that you asked out there who are experiencing wage theft doesn't even know that this program exists. And this could be an amazing opportunity, not only to make sure workers have additional pathway to obtain some sort of work authorization, but this could be the pathway to make sure that those jobs that do exist become better paid jobs because workers are willing to come forward and make sure that those employers are held accountable and we can transform those jobs into better paid jobs, safer jobs, and hopefully at some point even union jobs.
Amazing. Thank you. Thank you so much. Le quiero decir a las compañeras que compartieron su historia. Gracias por estar aquí. Gracias por su labor. Y espero que con la ayuda de estas organizaciones y con New Yorkinos se sienten cómodas, se sienten en casa y este es su lugar ahora. Gracias por estar.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I just want to reiterate the words of Chair Vila. I just want to thank you all for all the work all of you have been doing. Since day one, all of you have been there for these migrants, meeting them where they're at, whether it's receiving them or anywhere and everywhere they're at. All of you have been there, helping them every single way possible. Just curious, all of us know, all of us in the city of New York know the great work all of you have been doing and also with the resources that in some cases you don't have. You're stretching every resource the most you can. So just wondering, has the agencies that testified, have they reached out to offer resources or to ask how they could be helpful?
Yeah. So the agency that we, the only agency that we have a strong partnership because we receive directly funding is SBS. We don't necessarily work nor have received any funding from Moya to support our work. This is why we're asking city council to step up, to provide support. We depend highly on the Day Labor Workforce Initiative, which is one of our main sources of income. And then we're asking other initiatives, like we have the Support of Immigrant Women and also the Low Wage Worker Initiative. And also for the Deliverista Hubs, hopefully we will have two hubs opening very soon. We're hoping that the city council will step up. Where I think WJP has been responding to a lot of the needs to support newly arrived immigrants, mostly depending on this type of funding. WJP hasn't received any additional funding nor from the administration to support newly arrived immigrants in the past year. So Day Labor Workforce Initiative is sort of like the backbone to keep outdoors open.
Well, at La Colmena, as you all know, we're on Stein Island, right? So it's very important for us to ensure that we can continue having communication with all city council members and all agencies. Because if we don't, then we don't want the same story that happened about two, three years ago where our funding was taken away. And I don't want to reemphasize that, but this is why we have been very adamant on trying to ensure that we continue communication with every city agency and all elected officials. But to reemphasize the work that we do, it is, it does take a toll. It does take a toll on every staff member, including just the community members because we all have to work collectively in order to continue doing the work. But just to reiterate what Liha mentioned, is that each one of us that is here today, we have applied for certain funding for FY25 in order to continue doing this work. Because again, we do foresee an increase of 2,000 more individuals coming to our center. That, because of the increase, we had to open up our third center, right? So that's where we are at. But one thing that we do want to reemphasize and maybe ask for enforcement is to ensure that when we do apply for certain RFPs and we do get it, for us to get paid on time, for us to, for our contracts to be registered because then it leaves it up to the organization to find ways or find foundation money in order to do this work. And it's not easy. I mean, La Colmena, we do great work and all of us here do great work, but we're small, and small but mighty. But we do need, we do ask that to please push agencies to ensure that our funding does get registered on time, that we get paid on time.
Yeah, thank you so much. We know the strain that it puts on the organization, particularly from my estimation, not funded at the level that you should be funded for the work that you're doing. And then to add insult to injury, to not pay you for those services on time destabilizes you all as organizations and quite frankly destabilizes the whole ecosystem and community. Because if you are not successful, you are frontline responders. And clearly, the "what about us"? I wish I had that at the top of the hearing because there is a huge segment of the community that you are single-handedly serving outside of these structures that is so, so important. So I want to thank you and lift up the contracting fixes that need to happen, but also funding you at the adequate levels. We need to sustain and build the infrastructure that we've developed over the years. And it needs to be beyond a member initiative. It needs to be held by the city institutionally as a matter of practice because we will continue to welcome people from all over the world for as long as we remain a city. So thank you for the work that you do. And next we'll have, and, thank you. Next we'll have Darlie Corniel, Ifia Themopoulos, Jade Vasquez, Dorian Block, Fautumata Batuli Diallo, and Andrew Santa. No, no, I think. Hi, y'all. So our clock is set for two minutes and I encourage you all to keep to it. So thank you. We'll start here.
Thank you, Chair Aviles, Chair Feliz and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify. My name is Darlie Corniel, Director of Education at the Consortium for Worker Education, a nonprofit and the training arm of the Central Labor Council. As evident by the met demand for migrant services, we have seen firsthand the urgent need for greater resources for the reputable organizations serving new arrivals and asylum seekers. Preparing for this meeting to enter the workforce go beyond work authorization. We must assess employability, language access and acquisition, skill possessed and skill needed, and determine available capacity and opportunity for expansion. Stability in housing, healthcare and childcare, including schooling, directly impact the access and retention for these services. We are greatly encouraged by the council passing of Intro 84 and 85, which will inform city agency and those providing services to migrants and asylum seekers. CWE had the opportunity to provide, to partner with smaller organizations that cannot afford what we here La Colmena said, which is to have contract and not be paid on time. Some of our partners include our Initiative Day Astoria Worker Project, that have provided navigating New York classes to immigrants in the shelter system in Spanish and French, providing skill development and information on pertinent city programs for which immigrants can qualify. CIANA, which provides case management, legal and educational services to 3,000 asylees from 54 countries and expand their ESR classes through CWE funds. ANSO, a Center for Refugee and the New York Community for Change, have provided thousands of migrants each year with ESL digital skills and job readiness classes, expanding those services because that was not necessarily the regular services provided. We made the role. We had run Know Your Right workshop for 1,300 immigrants each year, providing them with education and assert the rights in the workplace. All this to say is that organizations need funds to continue. to continue the work that we have been doing. It is impossible to came up with services and made the demand that we are seeing on the ground with the same level of funding or we cut funding, as it was mentioned before in this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you to the City Council, Immigration Chair Aviles, Small Business Chair Feliz, and the Committees on Immigration and Small Business for their advocacy on the issue of expediting work authorization for asylum seekers. I am speaking on behalf of Hopper Kitchen, an organization that uses the food industry as a catalyst for economic mobility. Thank you to the council for your ongoing and steadfast support of our work, our members and our initiatives. Over the past 16 years, we have supported a community of over 1,500 women and gender expansive people, immigrants and people of color in launching careers in the food industry, starting and growing their small businesses and accessing additional resources. We do this work through workforce training, job placement, wraparound support services and small business incubation. This year, we have adapted our signature workforce training program into a new bilingual offering, culinary career pathways for new New Yorkers. As an unprecedented number of migrants and asylum seekers arrive in New York City, Hopper Kitchen has responded with a program which facilitates access to high quality employment for migrants who have received work authorization in New York City. This program will train 80 participants over four cohorts this year. It consists of five weeks of kitchen and professional readiness training with additional food protection training. The group also undergoes three hours of intensive ESL instruction contextualized for the food industry daily. Our first cohort graduated from the program in late May and we can say with confidence that there is an overwhelming demand for this program. We have received over 600 applications to date to fill just 40 program slots for our first two cohorts. We have already learned many lessons from working directly with migrants on workforce development to date. We'd be happy to connect with anyone who wants to learn more, to share our experience and expertise. I wanted to just conclude by thanking the council for your call for a resolution to the work authorization backlogs at the federal level and also underscore the need for additional funding to ensure we can meet our training goals for this program. We are seeking the council's support in fiscal year 25 specifically for this program. We believe it is imperative for organizations in our city to welcome this community into the workforce and to do our utmost to meet their needs at this critical time. And we hope the council could support us in this effort. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Dorian Block, Senior Editor at the Center for an Urban Future, an independent think tank focused on creating a stronger and more inclusive economy in New York. Thank you to Chairs Aviles and Feliz and members of the committees for the opportunity. I'm here to share some proposed solutions based on our research that address some of the challenges that we've been discussing today. Over the past two decades, the Center for an Urban Future has published many reports on the vital role that immigrants play in New York City's economy and what policymakers can do to help the newest New Yorkers thrive. Most recently, in September 2023, the center published a report entitled "Preparing Today's Asylum Seekers to Become Tomorrow's Workforce", which found long waiting lists at most of the city's programs offering English classes and workforce training tailored to immigrants. Even before the recent influx of migrants, New York City was struggling to help many of the city's 2.79 million working age foreign-born residents, including over 1.4 million with limited English proficiency, with job training, workplace certifications, learning English and connecting to other services that lead to employment. Since then, the stream of arrivals has continued and policymakers have taken some important steps to provide assistance that goes beyond humanitarian aid, including the creation of the city council's New Arrivals Strategy Team in April 2024. But a lot more is needed to help build the capacity of the city's immigrant-serving organizations and to support more of the newest New Yorkers on the path to economic self-sufficiency. One of the biggest takeaways from our research is the striking inadequacy of funding for English for speakers of other languages, which has been raised today. Our report finds that fewer than 4% of all adult New Yorkers who could benefit from literacy education are able to take ESOL classes each year. For instance, the Queens Public Library alone has an ESOL waiting list of about 2,000 people. This morning, I got an email from the New York Public Library, which explained that their waitlist only has 1,300 people on it because they don't allow anyone else on the list because they don't want to give people false hope. Just quickly, our solutions that we propose are asking the city council to restore and baseline funding for adult literacy programs in the fiscal year 2025 budget, ensure that new RFPs support joint ESOL job training programs run by CUNY, the city's libraries, nonprofit training and literacy assistant organizations, which absorb the bulk of the demand. In addition, just very quickly, the city can step up in supporting ESOL and certification programs for migrants who do not yet have work authorization because there is not much funding for them. Also, to ensure that the future city contracts and RFPs allow providers greater flexibility, including remote and hybrid options. We heard that from many of the providers we spoke to. And allowing city funding to integrate wraparound services into existing programs. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles and Chair Feliz. Thank you and committee members for the opportunity to testify. My name is Jade Vasquez and I'm the Director of Policy and Research at WIN, the largest shelter and service provider for families with children. We operate 16 shelters and 500 supportive housing units across the five boroughs. Each night, nearly 7,000 people call WIN home, including 3,600 children. WIN has always welcomed immigrants to our shelters and we are committed to ensuring a safe and supportive space for all unhoused families regardless of their immigration status. We estimate that one-third of our families are immigrants. Last year, to address the critical gap in immigration legal services for our shelter residents, WIN partnered with NILAG to launch a Prostate Plus clinic for our clients. Since launching the program, our team has screened 371 families in our care and helped 64 individuals apply for asylum and work permits. Today, 58% of those applicants have received work authorization. Immigration legal services are key to helping migrants and asylum seekers begin their new lives in the United States. WIN is proud to support New York's Access to Representation Act and urge our local and state governments to appropriate at least $150 million towards immigration legal services. WIN is also calling for improved coordination and collaboration between the city and New York's immigration courts as our clients have reported having their immigration cases paused by a federal judge if they claim they do not have a lawyer. By pausing the clock, judges are delaying new asylum seekers' ability to obtain work authorization. At WIN, we are confident that the city's newest arrivals can help fill our current labor shortages and strengthen our economy. WIN's income building program has been instrumental in preparing new arrivals for the workforce. Our team of specialists have already helped one-third of migrants with work authorization secure employment. We believe that WIN's legal and income building initiatives, which are mostly funded by philanthropic dollars, can serve as a model for the city and other shelter providers. And we're eager to work alongside the administration and city council to implement long-term, sustainable solutions that allow migrant families to exit homeless shelters and build a future in New York. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Aviles and Chair Feliz for holding this hearing. My name is Andrew Santa Anna, Deputy Director of Research and Policy at the Asian American Federation, where we proudly serve the collective voice of over 70 member nonprofits serving 1.5 million Asian New Yorkers. I just want to start by saying I was welcomed into this building by a trio of pride flags that were inclusive of BIPOC and trans communities whose experiences of the world were also often not met by responsive governments and laws. And with that in mind, I wanted to talk about AAPI New Yorkers. Because the majority of AAPI New Yorkers are immigrants. Some of them are LGBTQ, but two-thirds of us are foreign-born. 47% of Asian New Yorkers have arrived to the city after 2010 and 13% of our community are undocumented. Regarding the initiative, the intro before this court, regarding Intro 216, it is obvious that without a valid form of identification, many immigrants find it difficult to find jobs, open bank accounts, access additional city benefits available to them. One of our member organizations in South Brooklyn noted that the backlog for NYCIDs was as long as two or three months out. We know this through our partner member agencies and through the work of our small business team that understands the vital role valid identification has in improving the lives of quality of small business owners and service industry workers. Providing in-person appointments that meet the ever-increasing demand for NYCD IDs and allowing same-day and walk-in appointments would especially benefit immigrants who have limited flexibility and predictability in the work schedule. So we support that initiative. And truly, who knows when someone actually becomes a real New Yorker? But when someone has a picture with their name on it that has their, that has information that that can help them get IDs or work authorization or jobs, all of those things are helpful. Regarding the resolutions to, for work employment authorization and humanitarian parole, these are also no brainers. As a former immigration and family law attorney and Chair Aviles, I appreciate your rep on supporting that. Without work authorization, immigrants must turn to informal, off-the-books employment, leaving them susceptible to wage theft and workar exploitation, including things like trafficking. For many immigrants, work authorization is as important as getting custody of your children, getting an order of protection or getting child support. With 13% of AAPI immigrants in New York City being undocumented and 15.5% of immigrant, Asian immigrants living in poverty, clearing this backlog of I-765 applications will create safer economic opportunities for immigrants and help address the high poverty rates amongst our communities. And while I went, and I just wanted to drop because SBS mentioned some of the work of the Asian American Federation and we appreciate uplifting our important small business work. And with that in mind, that work needs to be funded. With the increase of migrants and immigrants in our communities that are funneled into ethnic corridors and neighborhoods, programs through SBS that have uplifted commercial corridor revitalization have been important. And these programs need to continue because through small businesses, they create job opportunities for new migrants and for other people who are trying to come out of the shadows, want identification, want to put food on their table and relieve the burden on the city and state and the federal government. Thank you very much.
Thank you to this whole panel. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And I, of course, want to ask you a ton of questions, but I think we'll have to do that off the record. If you could answer just a quick yes or no. Have you received commensurate funding from the city for the programs that you're running to meet the demand currently?
Absolutely not.
Was that a yes or no or mixed?
Do you receive funding for shelter services? But our initiatives are philanthropically funded.
Your testimony notes that WIN digs into its unrestricted funding to be able to meet the client's needs, which is truly commendable. And I thank you.
As an independent think tank, we don't receive funding from the city.
Yes, we could always use more. We receive some, but in order to sort of particularly meet our budget needs for this program, we do have a funding gap we're looking to meet.
We have now received additional funding. We are asking for it. However, not receiving additional funding. We do, we did provide it additional fund for the small partners who demand for salary increase on this year.
Thank you. Thank you all. And we're going to turn to the Zoom. Fatumata Batuli Diallo on Zoom.
Your time is started.
Hello. My name is Mamuna from African Communities Together. Fatumata would need a French interpreter in order to testify. She'll be doing her testimony in French.
Great, we have interpretation available.
Bonjour, chers membres des comités de l'immigration et des petites et moyennes entreprises. Je suis membre du comité des demandeurs d'asile organisé par African Communities Together. Je suis ici devant vous aujourd'hui pour vous faire connaître les défis rencontrés par les demandeurs d'asile dans la ville de New York et les moyens par lesquels New York et SBS peuvent nous soutenir. Comme vous le savez déjà, avec la règle des 150 jours, les migrants ne peuvent demander leur autorisation de travail que 150 jours ou cinq mois après le dépôt de leur demande d'asile et un autre délai d'attente d'un mois pour obtenir leur autorisation de travail. On sait que SBS n'a aucune autorité au-delà des politiques fédérales, mais peuvent soutenir les migrants pendant qu'ils attendent leur autorisation de travail. Les migrants...
Une seconde, s'il vous plaît.
Can you pull it closer to you?
Yes. I'm to do the interpreting, is that correct?
Yes.
She doesn't have an interpreter, okay. I just need to break it down because she's going very fast.
Okay, if you want to tell her to pause and...
So hello, I would like to thank, like to thank all the members of the Immigration and Small Business Commission here today. I represent African Communities Together and I'd like to speak to the difficulties being faced by the members of this community. I, we work with New York, the city of New York and SBS on various programs. One of the issues that I'd like to raise is the fact that... So we have to, we have to make certain demands 150 days in advance. And this is, logistically, this is something very complicated faced by the members of our community. So basically, as you know, there's the 150-day rule. Asylum seekers have to wait 150 days after demanding asylum in order to seek work authorization. This is a very heavy burden on that community. And we know that SBS has no authorization beyond reaching to the federal level. All it can do is basically be there as a support to the immigrants in the interim period while they're waiting. So newly arrived immigrants need some very essential services that are very important for them. Preparing them, for example, to enter the workforce. And also, a couple of other services, of course, how to write their resumes, how to write an application for work. Also workshops on how to conduct themselves during an interview. And what would be very useful is digital literacy to help them have the means to do all of the above. And, but the main obstacle to finding a job is the work authorization. And in addition to that, language access, specifically English. And in fact, what I wanted to say was that even if you do have a work authorization, there still remains the English as the main barrier to being able to enter the workforce. That is one of the most difficult points. It's a well-known fact that immigrants who do not speak either English or Spanish are very much, are very much behind when it comes to accessing jobs or accessing services. And a lot of the migrants coming from Africa are mainly from Guinea, from Mauritania, from Mali or Senegal. Their language is often French. Or Arabic, or Arabic. What we're asking for is training in French and Arabic that is suited to these newly arrived immigrants.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Please feel free to submit additional... Please feel free to submit additional testimony. Next, we'll have Dinah Foley, Elizabeth Byrd, Karina Kaufman-Gutierrez, Dimitri Daniel Glinsky, Dinik Martinez, and Sharon Brown.
Good afternoon. My name's Dinah Foley. I'm a social worker in the immigration practice at Brooklyn Defender Services, and I wanted to thank the Committees on Immigration and Small Businesses and Chair Avilas and Chair Feliz for allowing us to testify here today. Brooklyn Defender Services Immigration Practice protects the rights of immigrant New Yorkers by defending against ICE detention and deportation, minimizing the immigration consequences of criminal and family charges for non-citizens, and providing representation in immigration relief applications. And we're really grateful to the Council for its investment in providing legal representation in complex cases for our immigrant communities, and through Knife Up and the Immigrant Opportunities Initiative. The people we serve often face significant and numerous barriers to economic survival, and enhancing access to ID NYC presents our city with an opportunity to remove one of these barriers. Ideas vital for New Yorkers in seeking access to city benefits, employment, healthcare, and opening bank accounts, and applying for immigration applications, and just the ability to travel the city safely without fear of being penalized by law enforcement for lacking ID. For asylum seekers, some form of photo ID is necessary for an application for an employment authorization document, and photo ID is also needed to attend the biometrics appointment that's required for an EAD to be issued. We've seen instances of the ability to work delayed due to issues accessing ID NYC, and the consequences of delaying access to work are expansive, deepening food insecurity and housing instability, preventing access to healthcare and basic hygiene items, and making it harder for people to leave relationships that are harmful to them. BDS strongly supports Intro 216, which would require the city to provide walk-in appointments, additional training for staff, and an appeal of a denial at the time of application. Like Council, like Councilmember Hanif mentioned earlier, I also went on the website yesterday and today and found that there were no appointments available, so right now it is not possible to schedule an appointment for an ID NYC. And as we detail further in our written testimony, the ability to appeal an application or a document denial onsite is also critical. ID NYC was created to ensure that those members of our community who most urgently need ID are able to obtain one, and we're grateful to the Council and the Committees for your continued efforts to try to make this program more accessible. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairs and Members of the Committee. My name's Elizabeth Byrd. I am Director of Public Policy at EdAlliance. Educational Alliance was one of the first settlement houses in New York City founded 130 years ago in response to Jewish immigrants fleeing Eastern Europe at the time. Our history is relevant today as we work to integrate a new wave of asylum seekers into the city. Today, I want to speak a little bit about our efforts to help asylum seekers with work authorization and employment opportunities through partnerships with the city. In February, we launched a work authorization clinic through a pilot partnership with the Mayor's Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. We appreciate the administration's willingness to collaborate with us on it. Our intention was, our intention was to reproduce the structures in place at the city's asylum application help center on a smaller scale while connecting clients with coordinated supports to help them gain stability in their lives. By leveraging our network of volunteers to staff the clinic, we designed a cost-effective pilot to complete work authorization applications and add capacity into the system. In our clinic, we strive to replicate the model of the city's larger help center. Clients are seen by appointment, all volunteers complete a thorough training, and a supervising attorney provided by OWASO reviews each application before it is submitted. There are also key differences from the city's help center. Our clinic operates on a smaller scale and only serves individuals filing for work authorization on the basis of pending asylum. In addition, we offer coordinated supports during the clinic. Representatives from SBS and Workforce One are onsite to connect clients with employment workshops, training opportunities, and job listings across the five boroughs. Individuals at our clinic also have immediate access to the wraparound services we offer, including English classes, free clothing, and case management. Volunteer recruitment has been extremely effective, and we've had an outpouring of interest from people looking for opportunities to help. For asylum seekers, a critical step toward independence is applying for work authorization, and because of our partnership with the city, we have increased the number of individuals who are able to legally work today. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And before we have our next public testimony, just want to recognize, I guess, the New York Times group in the balcony from Councilmember Martes' district. Thank you and welcome. Next, Mr. Dimitriya.
All right. Thank you, Chair and the Committee, for the opportunity to support this important legislation. Our Russian-speaking Community Council is the oldest active nonprofit of the community of 21st century refugees and exiles from ex-Soviet autocracies. We're providing newcomers with culturally competent services, including organizing and advocacy, and to preempt the question, I must say that for most of 12 years of our history, have been doing this on an entirely volunteer basis. In the past three years, over 70,000 of Russians went through our southern border seeking refuge. This means close to 20% increase in the size of the total Russian diaspora in the U.S. Granting parole to those seeking asylum, all those seeking asylum would bring more uniformity and equity to these decisions and to the waiting time for employment authorizations. Clearing the backlog on them is also timely and necessary, and so is the New York State bill removing immigration-related barriers to licensing and certifications. But these much-needed solutions would not be enough to address the disadvantages and the soft forms of exclusion from certain areas of work faced by some of our refugee diasporas and the subgroups within them. The latest influx of asylum seekers from Russia has brought many of those who worked in public life on the side of human rights and democracy. Some of them had to flee from their country in the middle of their careers because of speaking out against the war of aggression. Their experience in their country's struggles brings value to the U.S. and New York, as our own democracy is being threatened directly and indirectly by the same or related actors, some of whose collaborators have had significantly more clout and opportunities in our city than those fleeing from them. We at our CCI meeting asylum seekers who in better times worked as community organizers or pro-democracy campaign managers. Here, after gaining their EADS, they are lucky to get entry-level jobs in Staples or Target, great companies, but not always the most efficient use for these people's talents and passions. Alas, let me put it bluntly, most of our international nonprofits, research centers, and related agencies, including city-funded like Union and others, are yet to acknowledge the activists and professionals in exile from autocracies and the skills and experience they bring, as can be attested by those of us from the previous waves who came here from backgrounds in human rights and democracy movements. I urge our estimate City Council to set up or encourage the creation of a fellowship-type incubator for public service professionals fleeing from autocracies, to facilitate their entry to nonprofits, research centers, perhaps even city agencies, so that our city can benefit from the experience and transferable skills gained in fighting against the forces that threaten our own future. And we encourage the recently-created new arrivals strategy team to meet with some of our refugees and exiles and include their CBOs in its cohorts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Pull it closer to you, so, there you go.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown, and I'm from Rosa Sharon Enterprises. The funding, I believe, should be for those who have a status where we know who they are and that they are not a threat to the nation. We do not want to fund people who are here that may be sending money back to certain places like ISIS or Hezbollah or other things like that. We have people that are coming across the border who also may be Jewish from Russian, and they spoke about Jewish from Russia, people coming from there. It may not be well-known. There are a lot of Russian Jews, so when people are coming across the border, there may be people who we can verify and others we can't verify. So when they're trying to find out who can work, the process is going to be stalled. 150 days, it sounds like a lot, but in certain situations, they have to do 150 days or more. And when they say they can't work, it's, it sounds like it's so horrible, but they find other ways to fund them when they're not able to work, so they're not just out, you know, on the street, and they can't do anything. They can go to some kind of place and stay, and there's some way that they're funded, that they will be able to eat, have a roof over their head. It might not be the circumstance that they want, but there is funding available for people who we can't verify. They take them into certain places, and then they have to leave after a certain amount of time, but they're, the working is so they can put a roof over their head, have clothing, things like that. And they're getting what they need, but they can't work unless we can verify who they are. Some people have been trafficked, this is the last thing I want to say, some people coming across the border may be returning to America from having been trafficked from America, and they were either trafficked when they were little, and they're coming back, and they may have had trouble in those countries, and they fled. So we need to be sensitive about who we are dealing with, and they may not look like just the ordinary American, but it's a melting pot. So the person from Africa could be American-born and could have citizen parents and be returning because they were trafficked. So trafficking is a big issue.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Yes.
Dinik?
Hi. I kind of agree with some stuff that you said, not in everything, but some stuff. I think that, my name is Dinik, D-I-N-I-C-K Martinez, with a Z at the end, so I have a YouTube channel, and I'm going to tell you why at the beginning. New York City, New York State, and United States Government does not, let me repeat that again, does not have unlimited resources. Reforces can be limited, are limited. They will expire sometime, some point because they collect taxes. So, for example, one example, like, most of the migrants are not asylum seekers, they are economic migrants. I got this information from firsthand. In Long Island City, for example, there are so many hotel shelters, and the shelter, the hotels regularly charge, just an example, 150.9 per guest. When they have a migrant hotel, they charge the city double, 300, just an example, this given amount. That's ridiculous, but they don't provide the same services. Okay. In Long Island City, there is one of the asylum shelters, I see a lot of food being wasted, and the food that these migrants get is better than a regular shelter, better. I have a YouTube video that is in YouTube, it has 41,000 views. I was like, chuck. My views always get between 5 and 20 views, but that one went like, wow, all over the country, how wasteful this migrants' food is. And milk. On June 2nd, I took another video, but I haven't uploaded. It's 10 days to be expired on the garbage, taxpayers' money wasted at work. So, sounds like that's all I'm going to say, like, all, basically, all these asylum shelters and regular shelters needs to be fiscally, physics, my English, fiscally inspected deeply because they waste a lot of money from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you to the panelists and your patience. Thank you. And next, we're going to turn to...
I want to say more, but anyway.
...our public testimony on Zoom. Next, we will have Gregory Morris.
Your time has started.
Good, good afternoon. I want to thank Councilmember Avilas, Councilmember Feliz, thank you for making this time, this joint hearing. I was with you in person briefly, but needed to run uptown to work with some of the different workforce development training organizations that have been active in support of migrants and new arrivals and refugees throughout the course of their history, but in particular digging in honestly and thoroughly, and oftentimes on their own over the last two years. And I say on their own partially because, as was pointed out during the course of this hearing, there has been an absence of coordination, I think, between what the city and the state are seeking to accomplish and the folks who are on the ground doing the work. In addition, as was noted during this hearing, the absence of resource and commitment to funding opportunities. So providers who have been sleeves rolled up, working hard diligently and in focused capacity, have had to seek additional resources, oftentimes drawing upon their own lines of credit and/or seeking philanthropic support to continue doing the critical work that it takes to help someone, a new arrival, find a pathway into a training opportunity. I represent the New York City Employment Training Coalition, 220 member organizations, 6,000 professionals, located in every borough, connected to every industry, all focused on trying to create pathways to opportunity. When you analyze the data, our providers are essentially working and meeting the needs of more than 200,000 New Yorkers every year, but we have always had a history of working with immigrant refugee migrant communities and sought to support their, their, their success over time, and it's our providers that have doubled down, many of them testified during the course of this hearing, to share with you what you already knew, which you already highlighted during the course of this hearing, and that is an absence of coordination, an absence of resource, the need for contextualized learning opportunities, the need for workforce development, the continued commitment between workforce development...
Your time has expired, thank you.
...and ensure better pathways. And finally, just to note, restore the cuts in libraries. We need to, we need to make sure that, that there are literacy resources, digital literacy resources, no cuts to contract services to make sure nonprofit providers are doing well. I thank you for making this time. I look forward to seeing folks on Thursday as well for the workforce development, economic development-related hearing. We support every aspect of what you've put forward in your resolutions and all the items that have been put forth, and we seek to serve as a resource in making future connections and continuing to champion the needs and interests of our providers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Hildan Colon Hernandez.
Your time has started.
My name is Hildan Colon, and I'm with the Central Department of NICE, which is one of the organizations that I was mentioning during this hearing. I think today is a reflection of what in NICE we have been talking about for a long time, that workforce development for immigrant community takes more than just putting people to work. It takes a part of immigration, it takes about ESL, it's a whole component, and in our conversations, we have developed a new program of apprenticeship from NICE work, which tackles that. And it takes one of the things that I think is also not mentioned today, but I think we should think about, the employers. We actually, right now, I'm right here in a restaurant, and we're trying to build a partnership around these issues. I think today what was raised was very important and highlighted that we are still in the process of trying to put together what is looks like. I think it's the need, for sure, to continue the efforts, but it has to be more strategic across the board, where all agencies and all community groups have very clear what workforce development is and what other components need it in order to make sure that people succeed. I think the other part that also was reflected today, and this is what we're trying to bring to the table, is that having a job, having a work authorization is not enough. You can have the work authorization, but if you don't have the training and the skills to get higher, is the same issue. As we have experienced, and I've been mentioning this across the board, as we do it in some of the programs that I've mentioned, I have a conversation with somebody that I said, I've been here for two years, I've never experienced being interviewed by someone. That's the product process that we need to start rethinking about, what is this workforce development looks for our communities, right? Because they're dealing with other challenges, they're even dealing with other issues, and we have to put all the pieces together. The funding definitely is needed, especially as the volume that we're seeing is... definitely is needed, especially as the volume that we're seeing has increased, but also as the requirements of how these programs are needed and the robust part of what all the pieces that are needed definitely is there. It is a step forward. We need to move forward, and we also need to bring all the parties together to actually have one language around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Great, great seeing you, Hilda Lynn. We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, in person, visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raised hand function in Zoom, and a member of our staff will call you in the order of hands raised. We also have two members who registered but were in here when they were called, Adama Bah and Karina Kaufman-Gutierrez. Are you with us in person via Zoom? All right. Seeing no one else, I would like to note again that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you so much, and this hearing is hereby adjourned.